Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, November the 4th. This meeting is in person, so we thank you all for social distancing and wearing your mask. And we're also live streaming online at our government channel and also on Spectra Charter, Channel 180. So at this time, I welcome up Mr. Don Ash to lead us in the invocation. And then afterwards, will you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Let us pray. Father God, it is in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, a day that you created, Lord, we shall be so glad about it. Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we reach out and we think about the city of McDonough, our partners there, and specifically Chief Morgan. Lord, we know that you're still a healer and you're in the healing business. Be with him and be with his family, God. Lord, we ask you to be with us in this meeting as we conduct the business of this great community. Lord, you have kept this community through COVID-19, and we recognize and realize that that too shall pass. So, Lord, be with us and guide us through this meeting. In Christ's name, we do pray with all thanksgiving, amen.
Amen.
And allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Thank you. And at this time now, we will call today's meeting to order. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, Commissioner Barn. Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda, second by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas had a question before we take the final vote yet.
Yes, item number 15, I'd like to move that to a discussion item for this agenda.
Excuse me. Okay, wait a minute, let's see, item 15. Okay, you want to, you're suggesting to move it to a discussion only?
Yes.
Okay, so that makes a motion. So do you have a motion to make that a discussion only? And I think, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second for discussion only. Any questions or comments? All in favor for discussion only, please signal by raising your hand. Again, two for discussion only. Others that would vote to move it for action. Okay, which means that if, okay, I didn't, I need to clarify the vote again. The motion was to move item 15, which is the resolution authorizing the refund of the application fee by the Lakedale Homeowners Association. The motion was to make that a discussion only, it was a motion as second. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Okay? All in favor of, all opposed to that motion? Okay, well, it will remain as a resolution. And are any other changes or comments to the agenda, or comments or suggestions? Here in nine, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Barn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? All in favor. Okay, all in favor of the agenda. Again, let me make sure, did you get the head count? What was it?
Four.
Okay, four, okay, and all opposed? Any opposed? Two, okay, all right, thank you. All right, we will now move into the agenda. We will begin with several Association for County Commissioners in Georgia Award Presentations. And we will begin with the first one, which is a Legislative Service Award recognizing Representative Andy Welch. And I understand that we've need to have the presenter, Ms. Kathleen Boeing of ACCG, the Association Legislative Director for that presentation.
One second, please.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kathleen Boeing from ACCG, and we do represent all 159 counties, and we're very pleased to be here today to present a 2020 Legislative Service Award to Representative Andy Welch. This award honors state House and Senate members who, we think, have done a good job and fulfill ACCG's mission of advancing Georgia's counties. So ACCG chose Representative Andy Welch specifically for a House Resolution 164, which created a constitutional amendment that was just on the ballot yesterday, and we call that the Putting the Trust in Trust Funds Amendment. He has been a lead advocate for that issue for many, many years. So while that's just one example of a piece of legislation we'd like to recognize him on, he has been a friend of counties for the past 10 years that he's been in the General Assembly, and we find him to be a very worthy recipient of a 2020 ACCG Legislative Service Award. So I know he's here in the audience, if you would like, we could bring him up.
Please, Mr. Representative Andy Welch, congratulations as well.
So, on behalf of all 159 counties of Georgia, we would like to represent, give this presentation to Representative Andy Welch. We have a plaque here that has the Henry County Courthouse photo on it, and he got to choose which county courthouse he wanted, and of course, he chose his home county here. So this is the award, everybody.
Okay, again, congratulations. Okay, well, Representative Welch, we really appreciate all your hard work for Henry County, and again, of course, the state of Georgia as well. So again, congratulations, we appreciate you, and best wishes as well. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Boeing, I understand we've got another recognition to make as well.
Okay. So the next award I'm here to present is a 2020 Youth Leadership Award. So ACCG recognizes up-and-coming youth leaders for their dedicated service and outstanding leadership to their communities through our annual awards and recognition program. So I'm proud to recognize that Jaden Williams is a recipient of a 2020 ACCG Youth Leadership Award. Jaden was selected for his passion in bringing awareness to issues such as domestic violence and human trafficking. He is considered a natural leader and does an excellent job of representing the youth's voice here in Henry County. So we'd like to congratulate Jaden Williams. If he's here, I believe he has his certificate or plaque with him.
Please come forward. Yes.
Can I have your plaque? He has already received his plaque, but this is...
Well, congratulations again.
So congratulations.
We do, on behalf of the board, do want to commend you as well. You are just an outstanding example of leadership, and as a youth, we just appreciate the trailblazer that you are, and again, for representing Henry County, even at the state level. So congratulations again, thank you for your service, and best wishes as well. Thank you again.
So the last award I'm here to present is the 2020 County Excellence Award, and this is an awards program that ACCG does in collaboration with Georgia Trend Magazine. And since y'all just started having public meetings, we wanted to make sure that we did this recognition, but your Clayton County, I'm sorry, the Henry County Rescue Task Force Program was recognized for innovation in public safety, and they are in the June issue of Georgia Trend. So there's a nice photo spread in here as well, and I believe you've got some of your public safety staff here and leadership as well. But the Henry County Rescue Task Force Program was recognized because the program provides fire EMS and law enforcement personnel with skills and knowledge to respond in case of an active shooter or hostile event in order to save lives and protect those responding. So they are, your program here is recognized for being very innovative, and it probably will be picked up by other counties around the state. These awards get a lot of attention because Georgia Trend is a very well-read publication, and ACCG is very glad to partner with them in recognizing counties. So congratulations to your Henry County Rescue Task Force Program.
And we thank you. Are there any representatives from our fire and rescue team, would you please come forward? And as they are coming forward, we definitely want to, you know, commend our EMS Director, Mr. Don Ash, who helped us to apply for that grant. And we definitely want to recognize, not only was it a joint effort with our law enforcement and public safety teams, but it was a joint effort between the counties and the cities as well. And it did include elected officials, that it did go to this training, that they then came afterwards to initiate this fire and rescue team. So congratulations. So congratulations. We know that Henry County is even better prepared for fire and safety and rescue, so thank you again, and police, and every form of law enforcement, so we are very proud of our team. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments from the board before we allow Ms. Boeing to leave us? Well, we thank you again for coming here, and again, welcome to Henry County, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. So at this time now, we will move into our next presentation, which is the Lifelong Academy Certificate Program. And this too is a recognition from the Association for County Commissioners of Georgia. And we have Mr. Jeff Christie, who's going to be making that presentation, so welcome this evening, oh, morning, feels like it.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board. Great to be with y'all, great to be in Henry County this morning. We are going to recognize today four individuals. Now Kathleen got to bring all the swag and the awards, but all of these four people are going to be recognized at the ACCG Annual Conference in Savannah in April 2021, over my dead body, I might add. We had to cancel this year, so we're going next year, by golly. So I'd like to start by recognizing two of the Henry County Commissioners, and Gary, I'm sorry, but ladies first. So I'm going to ask Ms. Vivian, if you'll stand while I say nice things about you, please. So Vivian is being recognized today as one of Georgia's newest certified county commissioners. She, of course, was elected in 2018, took office January of 2019. During that first year, she made a decision to pursue the voluntary certification. It requires nine classes, 66 hours of total educational content. And Ms. Vivian did eight of those nine required classes in her first year. If we opened the doors, Vivian was there, and we're excited. And then in January of this year, January 2020, she completed her ninth and final class to get those 66 hours, and that is when she became Georgia's, one of Georgia's newest and most recent certified county commissioners. In April, Vivian will receive a framed certificate and a lapel pin acknowledging her accomplishments, and I'll ask you all to join me in recognizing Vivian Thomas as a certified county commissioner. Next Commissioner, Mr. Gary, if you'd stand, please. Gary Barham, I believe he's number two in seniority on this board. He took office in 2013. He, like Vivian, went on to become a certified county commissioner fairly quickly. He was actually a member of ACCG's first class of county commissioners that became certified through the new Lifelong Learning Academy. That was the nine-course, 66-hours of education, and Gary became certified back in June of 2014. Once you become certified, we have an opportunity for you to move on into what we call specialty track education, and Gary took advantage of that. We actually have eight specialty tracks, a total of 69 specialty classes. And Gary got started in October of 2015, pursuing his specialty certification in public safety. And in order to achieve that certification, you have to complete eight classes, they're six hours each on average, so 48 hours of educational content to complete a specialty certification. Gary took classes like law enforcement in counties, mental health in the criminal justice system, disaster emergency preparedness, and five others. And on April 26, 2019, Gary finished and became certified in the specialty track, public safety. For that achievement, he will receive a framed certificate as well as an engraved metal plate that hangs from the bottom of that certificate, and we'll get that to him in Savannah. So Gary, congratulations on your specialty track certification in public safety.
Thank you.
Now I get to brag on two of the infamous Henry County staff members. They already know it because they're already standing, they're never apart, they're always together. I call them my dynamic duo. So we are excited this morning to be able to acknowledge the achievements of County Manager Sherri Hobson Matthews and Assistant County Manager Brad Johnson. I almost can never talk about them separately. They are so good together, they're an incredible team. I know I'm preaching to the choir on that, y'all know how good a job they do. But we started to promote the certification for county officials when we introduced the Lifelong Learning Academy. We started promoting it to county staff, and Sherri and Brad both took advantage and began the certification process in October of 2017. It's the same nine classes, the same 66 hours, but it's through a different lens. They get to participate in the classes right alongside the commissioners, and they get to see things through a commissioner's lens, which ultimately makes them much better county employees and able to serve all of you all in their communities. They took slightly different paths, I think it's because, you know, kind of like schoolchildren, sometimes you got to break the children up in the classroom. They went their different ways, they started on the same date, and actually, as it turns out, they finished on the same date, but they took different paths to get there. But as of October 2nd, 2019, Sherri and Brad both joined the ranks of Georgia's newest certified county officials by completing that 66-hour certification. We're super proud of them, and I want to ask you now to join me in recognizing Sherri Hobson Matthews and Brad Johnson. They too will receive the framed certificate and the lapel pin that goes along with that honor in Savannah in April of 2021. And as one extra note, we, after the general election of yesterday, and it'll probably take lord knows a week to get certified results, but we will have a whole class of newly-elected commissioners coming to Athens, Georgia, December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th for the Newly-Elected Commissioners Conference. And we have asked Sherri to join us as one of only two county managers statewide to help us make some presentations to this brand-new group of commissioners and help them learn how to do their jobs and do it well. So I look forward to being with Sherri in the first week in December in Athens, Clark County. Madam Chair, Board, I appreciate your time and the opportunity to be here today, and thank you all for your service.
All right, thank you, Mr. Christie, and so Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Barham, and of course, Ms. Matthews and Mr. Johnson, congratulations for your dedication to, again, continuing that learning and, again, become certified. That is the path, again, for Henry County's outstanding excellence commitment. So again, congratulations, if you all would just join me in giving them another congratulations again, that would be great. So thank you very much. And now we'll move into the next agenda item, which is the recognition of our Henry County employees for the Georgia Recreation and Park Association Awards. And we welcome up Mr. Penn, Mr. Jonathan Penn, our Cluster Lead for Leisure and Public Services.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning.
Today, we're going to be recognizing four employees and one volunteer who have received awards through GRPA with the Georgia Recreation Parks Association. It is the governing body for parks and recreation within Georgia for local municipalities. And these individuals have done some outstanding work to receive some awards. So first, we have Mr. Jerry Bel Castro. Jerry is the Center Manager at JP Mosley Recreation Center, and he received the Administration Leadership Network Distinguished Professional Award from GRPA. Jerry? Next, we have Ms. Peggy Hesselback. Peggy is our fun, bright leader of our adult programs, athletic programs. She is the, she received an award for Athletic Aquatics Network Distinguished Professional. She is making our pickleball program thrive throughout the county. As we all know, pickleball is growing, so we just want to congratulate Peggy. Next, we have Mr. Brian Dixon, who received the Park Maintenance Operations Network Distinguished Professional Award through GRPA. Brian is the supervisor at Maintenance at Cotton Fields. He has really done a phenomenal job with making cotton fields look beautiful, and we have so many people that have been coming to our golf course because of how it looks and how it plays now. And he's also a part of our ambassador program here in the county. So Brian has definitely shown great leadership, and we just want to congratulate Brian. Next, we have Ms. Cheryl Williams. She is at Locust Grove Recreation Center and does some phenomenal work with our Therapeutics Recreation Programming. Ms. Cheryl is receiving the Recreation Programming Operations Network Distinguished Professional Award through GRPA, and we want to thank you for all of your great work. And last but not least, this is, to me, this is the heartbeat of what we do in recreation, volunteers. They're very, very essential to what we do. And Mr. Chris Geiger has received the Athletic Aquatics Network Outstanding Volunteer Award through GRPA, and we really, really want to show a huge round of applause because without volunteers, we couldn't do some of the things that we do. And we want to thank them because they're not getting paid, they're volunteering their time to help us run our programs within the county. Mr. Chris.
All right, well, again, Mr. Bel Castro, Ms. Hesselback, Mr. Dixon, Ms. Williams, and Mr. Geiger, thank you again for all of your dedication to Henry County, especially in our parks and recreation. It's good to hear a lot of the aquatics background, considering that we're moving towards our Aquatics Center very soon too, so that's very good news. But thank you again for all that you do, and we're here to just commend you and thank you again. So have a good one, so we appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Penn. Okay, on our agenda next, we do have now a SPOS update, and we are going to invite up Mr. Rocky Romero for that, so, good morning, Mr. Romero.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. I also have Lynn Planchon, she's going to go over the Capitol projects.
Welcome this morning as well.
And this is going to be on our SPOS 5 projects.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Wood. Commissioners, I'm going to provide a brief overview
I think she's going to pull it up in a half a second.
Of the Capitol project status for SPOS 5. The Aquatics Center, currently, we have our aquatics consultant assessing the site locations to pick the best location for this aquatic center. On fleet replacement, fleet's been working hard to obtain bids, you'll see some of those before you this morning were on the consent agenda. The Fairview Police Precinct and Replacement Fire Station Number Six is currently in design. The fire stations and police precincts in Districts 2, 3, and 4, possible locations are being identified at this time. In District 2, the new recreation center, the design build RFP scope of work is in progress. In District 3, the Heritage Park Senior Center is going to have a fitness room added for their use, that RFP is at purchasing currently. In District 4, Mosley Park and Mickey D. Cochran Park Improvements are in development at this time. And in District 5, the design build proposals are under review for the two new multipurpose fields concession stand walking paths. This will be posted, so all the details for each project will be available for review.
Okay, well, thank you.
We'll continue now with the transportation projects for SPOS 5. I'm going to go district by district. First, District 1. I'm just going to hit the highlights on some of the projects, but like Lynn mentioned, it's going to be posted on the website. Plus, in addition, we also have a website coming up, providing all the projects with updates and pictures. The first one I want to talk about is Berg Road. We had a design kickoff meeting yesterday with our consultant, and we're going to issue, we already issued a notice to proceed for the starting of the design for next Monday, November 9. We also have a kickoff meeting for Leicester Mill at Bill Gardner Parkway Intersection Improvement, District 1, and we also issued a notice to proceed for the design starting Monday. In addition, we have Pixfield Road, this is a project that started in SPOS 4, we're going to have construction funding for SPOS 5, we're finalizing the plans, and we're going to start buying roadway by the end of the year. South Olah Road Extension, this is a project that started actually in a DOT a while back, so we picked it up, the design was SPOS 5, we actually already stake out the roadway, and roadway acquisition is going to start very shortly. Now we move into District 2. Dutchtown Road is a dirt road, we had a kickoff meeting yesterday with our consultant, and a notice to proceed will start November 16. Flipping Road Extension is a, we already have a design consultant, and hopefully it'll be approved today. As you can see, our agenda, we have a lot of SPOS 5 design to be approved today, this That's just kind of location. And then we also have Greenwood Road at State Route 155, that project, we have already issued a notice to proceed for that one back in October 12, our consultant is working on that. And also, John Spur Road at Mount Olive, this is a project that is on our SPOS 5, and actually G-That is working on the design, and they're going to provide the plans for us to put it out for construction. Hopefully have that by the end of the year. Now we move to District 3. Kind of highlights on that one, Bridges Road at Willow Lane is an intersection improvement. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday with our consultant, and a notice to proceed for it has been issued for next Monday, November 9. Race Track Road at Irish Lake, that's a shared project with District 1, we have a design consultant that is going to be hopefully approved today, in today's meeting. The same thing with East Lake Road at Airline Road is a shared project with District 4, and we have that resolution for today for approval. Just kind of locations. And also, State Route 20 at Turner Church, we are already in the roadway acquisition phase on this project, and hopefully we can beat it out by the end of the year on that one. Very neat a project. Now District 4. Now, District 4. District 4, Rockaway Road, we have, there we go, we have preliminary, preliminary plans completed on Rockaway Road. We have about five projects on East Lake Road, and they're all shared with District 3, and all of those projects will be for the board consideration for, for the approval of design consultants today. And last district, District 5, we have two projects. Fairview Road, we have the design consultant that was approved last month, and we're waiting for purchasing to issue all, at the time, and back to SPOS, so we can go ahead and issue the notice to proceed. And then West Village Parkway, that's for relocation, which is from Home Depot to Hearn. And then West Village Parkway, we issued a notice to proceed for the construction back in August, and it's on the construction right now. Clearing is pretty much done, and moving along pretty good. We'll take any questions.
Okay, well, thank you. We've heard the presentations. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Let's see, I saw Commissioner Clemens and Commissioner Thomas.
Rocky, could you go back to the, the District 2, Mount Olive? And I think you had Greenwood or something?
Yes. That's stuck. Oh, there we go.
Were those both signals?
Sorry. Yes, Commissioner, both will be signals. That'll be correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that correction because I don't want people to think that was a road because that...
They're intersection improvements.
Those are intersection improvements.
And they'll be signaled as both of them.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, would you go to the list for District 4, please?
You have, I think, three assignments to be shared, assignments between District 4 and District 3. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On those three assignments for your resolution today, I need you to place those on hold for further discussion between the two commissioners and pull them out for a separate resolution.
Do you have to clarify? Okay, well, we'll get to those, and we'll, the Board will take a vote on it, but that would mean that we would need to amend the, well, we'll just take a vote on it. So which items were those that she's referring to? If you can clarify for me, Mr. Romero?
I will let you know right now. Those will be under the consent agenda items E.
Item E?
Item E from the consent agenda under SPOS 5.
Okay, and your motion again is to make it a...
My motion is to place on hold the three items where I share responsibility with District 3 for further discussion between the commissioners, and they are to be placed on a separate resolution and not with a joint resolution for District 4. So they can come back next meeting. He and I have a meeting. They need to be on a separate resolution if it's a shared responsibility.
Okay.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Okay, let's have further discussions before we begin. Any other comments or questions?
Commissioner Thomas, just for clarification, right now, it is a separate resolution. So do you want to have that item tabled? Because right now, it's not, each, you all are going to vote on each resolution, so currently, it is listed as a separate resolution for those projects. Do you want to have that removed from the, I mean, tabled?
Okay, because I'm looking at Resolution E, and you're telling me each one of those are separate and it's not together.
So for E, there is a resolution. Are you, so let me make sure I understand what you're asking. Under E, do you want those, each individual project listed as a separate resolution?
A resolution for District 4 responsibilities only, not in a shared responsibility, but shared, shared responsibilities to be broken out to a separate resolution. So I'm asking then to table the items for a shared resolution to come forth at the next meeting to be presented, which would give Commissioner Barnes and I time to have a further discussion.
And so let me clarify, this is a road that is crossing districts, and what you're asking for is to separate out the cost of...
No, I'm not. I understand what you mean by cost.
Well, I'm trying to, we're trying to understand the resolution.
What I want to do is have an opportunity to talk with Commissioner Barnes about our shared responsibility. So I'm saying to them on this resolution to table the items where District 3 and District 4 share responsibilities. Those items be tabled.
I'm clear. So what we need to do is table that item.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine. I was just confused about the other part you said, but I'm hearing your motion again to just table it so that the two of you can sit down and talk about this as a joint shared project. Okay, I, I got that part. That's not, not a problem. Okay, all right, okay.
So when we get to item E, under the consent agenda, we're going to table, but it's four items that will be tabled because all four of those projects are shared between District 3 and 4?
Absolutely.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
That's my motion that I'm looking for. Okay, well, we're in, we're in the...
You don't need a motion to remove it from the consent agenda. If any board member wishes to remove something from the consent agenda, it would come off and go on to the regular agenda. So you would put this as maybe the first item after consent agenda and then vote on a motion to table it at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Clarify the process. Okay. Are there any other items from the consent agenda that the Board would like to have removed from the consent agenda for action?
I'd like to just ask them to table this all together because it sounds like they need to have a discussion about it and just take it all.
Well, wait a minute. Okay, let's, let's clarify. Are you talking, Commissioner Clemens, are you talking about, when you say all together?
Just the SPOS, the whole SPOS.
The whole SPOS list? Okay, so let's do this. We already have a note to at least take item E off the consent agenda, and now we're asking for...
So the...
Which items on...
Let me ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So we can leave it on there, but the E, the ones, the four that she's taken off, does it have to go on the agenda? Can it just be removed until they have a discussion?
Well, that's what we're... Yeah.
You have to take it off of the consent agenda, put it on the regular agenda, and then vote to table it.
So that's, that's my, that's what I'm asking, to leave everything that's on there on there. We approve what's on there. The other four, to table it instead of putting it on the agenda to vote on it.
Well, you have to, you have to take it off the consent agenda and then vote on the E. The Board has to vote to table.
Okay.
So, but you're not at the consent agenda yet. I would suggest, Chair, put a pin in the discussion about the consent agenda. Right now, you're still in presentations, and I think you've got this one and maybe two more, one more. Then you'll get to the consent agenda, and we can make sure we remove item E under SPOS from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And then deal with it immediately after.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification and direction. Okay, are there any other questions regarding SPOS? Okay, well, thank you again. We appreciate you both in this update. Okay, we'll now move into the next agenda item, which is the Financial Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. This morning, I am coming to present a certificate of excellence to the Henry County Financial Services Team. I will ask Mr. David Smith to join me here at the podium to receive the certificate, but this is definitely great news for Henry County. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Henry County for its comprehensive annual financial report, which we refer to as our CAFR, for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2019. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. And I think all of the board members have received a copy of our CAFR. If not, I will make sure that you do. Again, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This morning, I certainly want to recognize Mr. Smith and his entire team for this honor, and certainly want to thank you for your hard efforts in making sure that Henry County remains in a strong financial position and making sure that we are being recognized for honors such as this. So again, thank you, Mr. Smith, and your entire team.
Thank you.
And Mr. Smith, to you and your whole team, kudos to you all. Again, even in the last Board of Commissioners meeting, we had a very great report about our sound financial standing here in Henry County, the AAA bond rating that we've accomplished here. And again, just thinking how far we've come over the last couple of years, just giving the Board wonderful periodic updates on where we are financially. So again, kudos to you and also your team. Again, it is not taken for granted. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
So, thank you again. We will now move into the consent agenda, and we've got several items on the consent agenda, and please note that, especially when we get to a lot of the capital improvements, we just received an update of a lot of the items that have been included in that, especially with the Fleet Services items. These were approved by the Board previously through the Capital Improvement Program. So please bear with me as I read through these items. The first one is District Attorney Resolution Accepting the Continuation of Allocated Victims of Crimes Act Subgrant Funds that have been awarded to the Prosecuting Attorney, Attorneys Counsel of Georgia. And it is in the amount of, well, it actually doesn't speak of the amount, but it is actually was presented, and it is to be administered for the continuation of the existing early notification victim advocate position. The next one from the District Attorney is also a resolution accepting the continuation of an allocated Victims of Crimes Act subgrant funds that was awarded to the Prosecuting Attorney Council of Georgia, and this one is to be for the continuation of existing victim compensation advocate position. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution awarding the contract for the design of the wetland and/or streams restoration of Butler's Bridge Road. And then under Public Safety, we have a Henry County Police Department Resolution approving the purchase of a LCA laser scanner kit for the Henry County Police Department Crime Scene Unit and also the Traffic Unit. Under the Technology Services, there's a resolution approving the purchase of new wireless access points from, using the state contract. Under SPOS 5, we've got several items. Resolution awarding bid number 21-20-41-6 for engineering design services for Sandy Ridge Road in District 1. We also have resolution awarded to bid 21-20-41-8 for engineering design service for Ellis Town Road, which is the Peaksville Road to Moccasin Gap in District 1. We have a resolution awarding bid number 21-20-41-9 for engineering design services for Jonesboro Road at Mount Olive Road. That is in District 2. Then we have a resolution awarding bid number 21-24 for engineering design services for Flipping Road Extension, and that is in District 2. We have, and then we have already made a note, but that item E, which was a resolution awarding bid number 21-20-41-10 for engineering design services for East Lake Road, including intersection of East Lake Road and Elliott Road, and Elliott Road and Rowan Drive and Elliott, and East Lake Road and Airline Road, and that again was in the shared districts of 3 and 4, and that one is going to be removed from the consent agenda to be voted upon to be tabled. Under Fleet Services, we have resolution bid number 21-7 for the purchase of six Ford F-250s with animal-controlled transport bodies. We have a resolution approving bid number 21-28 for the purchase of six F-350s and six F-150s, again, using SPOS and capital funds. We have resolution approving bid number 21-30 for the purchase of 12 Ford Escapes. We have a resolution approving bid number 21-31 for the purchase of six Ford Explorers. We have a resolution approving bid number 21-32 for the purchase of seven Ford Vans. We also have a resolution approving bid number 21-33 for the purchase of two Ford Expeditions. We have a resolution approving bid number 21-35 for the purchase of two Chevrolet 3500 Express Passenger Vans. We have a resolution approving purchase of two Ford F-550 trucks with Versa Lift bodies. We have a resolution approving purchase of one 2020 John Deere Wheel Loader. We have a resolution approving the purchase of one John Deere Excavator. We have the purchase, a resolution of one John Deere cab tractor. We have a resolution approving the purchase of three 2021 Kenworth Tandem Dump Trucks. We have a resolution approving the purchase of one 2021 Kenworth Tandem Roll-Off Truck. So those are the items on the consent agenda. Does the Board, again, have any items that they would like to have removed? I see the county manager raising her hand. Yes, come.
There should have been a strike through for Resolution, or letter C, Resolution Awarding Bid Number 21-20-41-9 for engineering design services for Jonesboro Road at Mount Olive in the amount of $51,650 to Corry Engineering. The Georgia Department of Transportation is actually going to be handling that engineering work for us, so we no longer need that resolution approved.
So that needs to be eliminated totally?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other changes to the consent agenda?
Do we need to have it removed since it's a scratch through in it already?
I, I would think so, just because of this... I'm sorry.
The item E, is that what we're referring to?
No, the item C, the one that the county manager just mentioned, is being removed from the consent agenda.
You've removed it from the consent agenda, and when, after the end of consent agenda, take up item E and table it?
Right.
And take up item C and just, you can, you can just remove it from the agenda.
So we will need to vote on that one separately, too, as well?
Yes.
If it's removed, okay. Okay, so item C and E will be removed from the consent agenda for board actions for approval or denial, table. So all other items on the consent agenda, are there any other changes or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
I have a comment that I wanted to direct to county manager, and this is something you can have a conversation with me about later. I'm assuming everything went through the procurement process that we have in Henry County. And I am concerned, I went through all the purchases that are being made here. We've done an excellent job at supporting companies outside of the county, and we need to find a way to see what is it that's preventing some of our local vendors from not getting some of these bids. We honestly believe in community economics. Community economics allow us to hire within the community, turn dollars within the community, and keep your community strong. And so that's just a concern. I would definitely like to have a conversation with you about that process that was taken for this. Because when I look at all the bids and all the dollars that are going out, one thing your SPOS dollars are supposed to do, or your capital improvement dollars, are to be an economic engine for the county, for the county, not just to send money away from the county, but for our small businesses within the county as well. So that's, there again, that's a discussion we can have at a later time and date, but I wanted to let you know, looking at this list, if I were a small business owner in Henry County or a provider in Henry County, I would wonder why am I paying so much taxes and so much toward this government, and the money's not going back into the community? So we do need to have that discussion. Thank you.
Okay, that will be noted for future discussion and maybe to be presented before the whole Board as well at a future meeting. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing now, the floor is now open for a motion again for to approve the consent agenda, but to take item C and E off for a vote of board action. So we have a motion by Commissioner Holmes?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion? Yes?
Item C is already a scratch through on our agenda. It's not on the agenda, so I don't know why we have to vote on it.
I don't know which version of the agenda you have, so I'm looking at the electronic one.
Okay, so it is a scratch through.
Okay.
So that item is already off the agenda. It's scratched through, so we don't need to vote on item C. It's only the item for the late, whatever, the E, what is it?
So just to clarify, yeah, well, yeah, and if I'm understanding Commissioner Clemens' point, even, it's a scratch through. Do we still have to take it off and take action on it? Is really, is that correct, Commissioner Clemens, what your question is?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think we're supposed to have to take action since it was scratched through on the agenda that we approved.
If you, if the agenda you approved did not include...
If you, if the agenda you approved did not include item C, then you don't have to take any action. It was on the published agenda, and what you typically are doing is when you, when this Board approves an agenda item, other than as published, you typically vote on it, but if the agenda, and I just don't know which one y'all were looking at.
Yeah, because obviously we're, I'm looking at a separate one. I wasn't looking at the latest one that, yeah, so what was published is the real question? The one that shows a scratch through?
The one published on the website is not, was not removed. It happened after we published it, so it would be safe for you to just remove it now.
Okay.
I put a scratch through it for you all because it's, it was removed, and I didn't want you to have to review the item, but it was published to the agenda, and then it was removed by the department.
Okay, so you can just proceed without acting on it, I think. You'll be fine.
So we can proceed without acting on item C?
You don't need to act on it, but you do need to table the item E.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. All right, so again, the agenda that we're, we've got a motion and a second, and again, is to approve the consent agenda items, and then item E will be removed on the agenda for discussion, okay? In action. Okay. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you. That is a unanimous approval. Okay, well, that does end the consent agenda. Well, let's definitely move now into item E, and that is, again, the resolution regarding the, the SPOS item number E, which was a resolution awarding bid 21-20-41-10. And again, it was for the engineering designs for East Lake Road and all those intersections that were mentioned. So the item is there, so we have a motion now?
Motion to table for further discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to table for further discussion. Okay, Commissioner Barm makes the second. Any further discussion or item? All in favor, table it for further discussion. Thank you. That is five to zero. Okay, we will now then move into item 10, which is the presentation from the Department of Transportation here in Henry County on non-revenue streetlights. And we're going to ask Mr. Mahier, let me get that right, to actually make that presentation. So, oh, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Per your directives, before you is a non-revenue streetlight presentation. For clarity and simplicity, this presentation has been put in a tabular format, and in the first location column, it designates 11 locations. Campground Road, Highway 42, Jonesboro Road, McDonough Parkway to I-75, Rockaway Road, unincorporated area, East Atlanta Road, within, from Stockbridge City Limits to Fairview Road, Panola Road, East Atlanta to Highway 155, Highway 20, Jodeco Road, Lester Mill Road, and Bill Gardner Parkway, Corn Road and Old Jackson Road, 1520 South Ola Road, Fairview Road, Panola Road to Hearn Road. The, there is a second column which defines the districts, followed by a appropriate land use for each location. And what we thought is to add a population density, which is per square mile, in the following column, and the average daily traffic volume. And the last column is the servicing power company. Now, this sheet represents a statistical and mileage distance to some locations of interest. The first column is a proximity to schools, second as proximity to hospitals, then distance to the fire stations, to the police stations, and senior citizen and parks. What we were supposed to bring before the Commission was a statistical analysis on accidents. First is a crash, statistics, accidents only in 2019. The second column, accidents with injuries, and the last is accidents that involve fatalities. Now, from these 11 locations, now we have a respond back from the servicing power company, six locations as the required number of lights, and the other five locations, they are in progress, and we are waiting to receive some response from the servicing companies any day. And we were supposed to look into any type of alternative energy source, which at this time, there's none. Discounts are based on the taxed and exempt status. And the column before last, it shows the monthly charges for each location per light, and the last column tallies into an annual cost. Now, we looked into U.S. Department of Energy to acquire any possibilities of eligibility for grants. They are not, at this time, we were told to check back in a couple of months, which we will, and bring before the Board if there are any news on that. And as far as our source of funding, currently, we have a line item in non-revenue streetlights, and for further, if necessary, then an avenue is to look into the fund balance transfer if necessary. And that's, that's pretty much open to questions if there are any.
All right, well, thank you again. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? This is good information. Any comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Wilson?
Could you go back to the crash data? So when we say Highway 20, is there any certain areas that you have it broken down, or just the whole stretch of Highway 20 from county line to the city limits, or how's that, how's that broken down?
Commissioner, Highway 20 is a longer stretch of the road.
Right.
So, so it's collectively, for that length of the area, that's the statistical summation of the accidents, but if you wish, we can go back and, and bring before you a, a specific location if required.
Basically, it runs the, the whole length that runs through the county?
Yes.
So not, you don't have it broken down as intersections or anything that nature?
Commissioner Wilson, I came up with the fraction from the data. So to come up with these numbers, I looked at the map and all the dots that corresponded to accidents only or crashes that involve fatalities. So it's just looking at a map and looking at counting all the dots for each crash. So for Highway 20, I looked at the entire Highway 20 in Henry County.
Okay, so can we get it, can we break it down to intersections? Because...
At the intersection, I looked at the intersection and counted the number of dots at the intersection.
Go back like Jodeco Road. I'm just looking at some areas that's got some high crash data. Jonesboro Road, Jodeco Road, and if we could break that down to intersections, it would kind of give us a general idea, do we need to light up the intersection, do we need to light the whole road?
So for the locations, there are some that are just intersections, and there are some that are entire road, like Jodeco Road. So for Jodeco Road, I looked at entire road, but for the first one, let's say Campground at Highway 20 and 44, I looked at only the intersection. So depending on whether it's entire road or intersection, the numbers can be high or low. If it's an entire road, then the number's obviously higher because there are more crashes along an entire road versus an intersection. So which particular one are we, you're, you're asking about here?
Well, actually, I was asking for all of them to, you know, separate them out, because when you take a stretch of road, it may be 10, 12 miles, 15, 20, whatever, and you may have a large number of accidents just in a intersection or in vicinity of. So I think it's given us, I'm not going to say incorrect, but I think we're getting some, some vague data if, you know, it's kind of like the whole road's involved in the accident data, when it could be just confined to intersection.
Well, when it was an entire road, then that was my understanding of you, wanted to see how many crashes there were on an entire road, for example, because Jodeco Road or, or Panola Road. So if you want to know crashes only at intersections as opposed to an entire road, then maybe...
Well, the thing, the purpose, the point is, is moving forward to placing streetlights on particular areas, we need to have some type of guidelines or some type of, some type of criteria, how do you place lights in a certain area? So...
So then we need to more specifically identify the location on a road as opposed...
In fact, you know, for moving forward, when we want to place streetlights in a certain area, do we, instead of trying to place lights down the entire road, we need to place them in the, in the area where the crash data is, is, is high?
Understand, and I think that's going to be part two of Sam's presentation, the streetlight study assessment. That is what they'll be asking a consultant to go in and really look at, dig deeper into those particular areas. I think the initial request from the Board was, these were the roads that were identified a couple of months back as areas that you all wanted us to look at installing streetlights. I think we were bringing back contracts, and there was a request from the Board to dig a little deeper and determine, you know, what warrants installing streetlights in the areas. And so what the staff has initially done is brought back that information that you all have requested in terms of crash data, the density within the area, and then item, the item after Sam's item is actually what Sam, or the item after Alex's item is what Sam will be presenting, which is the streetlight study assessment, which I think will dig a little deeper in terms of where the lights need to be placed, the type of lights, and I think goes into what Commissioner Barm had asked for in terms of identifying where these lights need to go and having a plan moving forward. So I think we'll get to that part in the second part of the presentation.
Maybe, now, I need a better understanding, out of this 11 locations, some are, are intersections, whereas some others are just entire road. Maybe we do not want an entire road, we want to just specify, specific intersections.
So the Commissioners have to identify which roads. Keep in mind, these are the roads that were identified months back when the Board elected to install lights along some major thoroughfares. And so now, if the desire is for us to dig a little deeper in terms of not just all of Jodeco Road and to look at the intersections, then I think that's something we can actually ask the consultant to do. Now, Sam can pull crash data, but it's only going to be if that data is available for that intersection. I think I understand what you're saying, it may not warrant lighting the entire intersection, lighting the entire roadway, it may just be a portion of that roadway that's experiencing a high number of traffics or accidents at that corridor.
Correct.
We can certainly ask the consultant to look at that, but this presentation here only speaks to what you all initially asked us to look at, which were the roadways that you all identified. Now, there were some roads that were presented that were intersections, and so if you'll notice, he does list intersections, but like for Jodeco Road, I believe the request was, we want lights along Jodeco Road, we want lights along Highway 20, and so that's why we looked at the entire corridor versus segments of the corridor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I saw Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Barm, then I've got to come in as well, so we'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
My question is, in your study, doesn't Georgia Power have recommendations already about lighting in distance in commercial and residential areas, how that should be set up? And is that being done along with, are we using an outside consultant for this?
So that's the next item after we get through the discussion, but yes, Georgia Power will come out if we tell them, hey, we want to put lights along Henry Parkway. They will come out and determine the number of lights that need to be installed. Now, in terms of them coming out and doing an assessment for the entire county, I'm not sure that that is something...
Not the entire county, of course, identified areas.
Yes, we could, we could, of all the providers, that's what we do today currently, when we have new subdivisions that are going in or what we consider non-revenue streetlights, specifically for Jonesboro Road. When we install those lights, we reached out to Georgia Power, told them that there was a desire to have lights along the Jonesboro Road corridor. Georgia Power came out and identified where those poles needed to be placed and the type of light that would be most appropriate for that corridor. So yes, to answer your question, that is something that they are able to do on a case-by-case basis. So we could ask them, and that's what they've done.
And the reason I ask that question is that I'm assuming they have the engineers in house to help make that decision. What does a consultant do then on our behalf?
So I think...
Georgia Power has a whole layer of engineers to determine what the best lighting should be, is what I'm saying. Wherever you tell them, they can tell, well, this is a residential, this is da-da-da-da, this is our recommendation. And I hear you say, maybe we only need lighting at an intersection, and I know we don't want to be overcostly in what we're doing, but it's very, very concerning for seniors to run in and out of light. You have light, no light, light, no light. There need to be some consistency in an area if we're going to do this, is what I'm saying. Now, maybe we can maximize the lights by looking at the maximum distance that we can put between them, but when you start just saying, well, just light up a intersection, and then you're coming from a dark area into a light area, you have to think about what we're asking people to do, and some people have trouble driving at night, getting their eyes adjusted, and those are things that we have to consider. We just can't light up a area, you run into the light, you run out of the light automatically, you run back into the light, that's concerning to me as to how that's managed. So that's why I'm asking, Georgia Power should have the ability, based on their research, based on senior citizens, based on eye and light adjustment, how these should happen, what should happen with those particular scenarios, is what I'm asking. If that's being considered, and are they a part of that discussion?
So Commissioner Thomas, Georgia Power is just like any other power provider. They're a business, and so if we call them and say, we want lights installed, that's what they're going to do. The purpose of us having the consultant is to answer those questions that you've just posed. You have engineers that are going to be a part of this consultant team that's not only going to look at crash data, but they're going to look at, are you going into an area that may be going from a highly commercial-based area to maybe an area that may be residential that gets down to a rural classification? And so those engineers are going to give us a perspective in terms of identifying where we need to light areas. My fear in having any power provider do that type of assessment for the county is that you're not going to get that degree of data to be revealed. Georgia Power, Central Georgia snapping shows, they will come out and install lights, and they're going to do exactly what this Board tells them. If you all pass a resolution saying, we want lights installed along Henry Parkway, they're going to come out and they're going to put lights along Henry Parkway, even, even if we don't need it along the entire corridor. If that's what we requested, that's what they're going to do. Having an engineer on, and I say an engineer, but having a study team to look at it, they dig a little deeper in terms of what, not only what type of lights would be warranted, but what areas need to be lighted. And we're not saying that this is something that we're going to go out and do every light tomorrow, but it gives us a plan so that we can budget for it, because there is an expense that goes along with not only installing the lights, but then the long-term expense of us having to pay for those services. And so it really gives us an idea and a plan of how do we budget for it, but also it takes all of the quantitative and qualitative data that they have to determine, hey, does this corridor really need to have 20 lights along it, or are there hotspots or areas that really would be more inclined to having lights versus an area that may be going from a commercial to a residential to a rural area? So I think the study or the assessment is what we need so that we will have the guidance, so that when we go to Georgia Power, we can say, look, here's our plan. Our plan has identified that we need to have lights installed in this corridor, and we're not asking Georgia Power to sell us the lights, and I hate to say Georgia Power, but any of our power providers to just sell those lights to us.
I think, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I do agree. I do think we need to have someone help us make that decision. I'm just trying to think about how we can maximize these dollars, and then it goes back to you and your team again, paying for it on a yearly basis, and not just have it come directly from our reserves in any form or fashion if possible. So the challenge is now going to be, how do we consistently pay for this from year to year? And simply saying it's a line item is simply saying you're taking it from general funds every year. And is there any alternatives to look at? What else can we do to generate funds to pay for this? pay for this? That's going to be the challenge.
And I think it's like any other expense that we have here, and it's just something that, at least with the study, it gives us a comprehensive idea of what we need to budget for, and it's not every year we're trying to figure out what that dollar amount's going to be. One of the things that I heard Alex mention this morning is that there is a possibility for us to apply for grants. The ability, it's not available to us today, but there's certainly an opportunity for us to look at some grant opportunities that may be able to assist with the lighting or at least with the cost. One of the other things that we have, it's, it's part of our toolkit, is also if the board looks to create community improvement districts. This is something that business owners can come together and decide, hey, I want to not only enhance my landscaping, but streetscaping, which is lighting, can be something that we can pass on to those that agree to be a part of what we call CIDs. And so there are opportunities out there. I think there was just a sense of urgency from the board for us to get moving on something, and what we wanted to do is just bring to you all what you all have specifically asked for, but we also want to make sure that we're good stewards of, of the taxpayers' dollars, and we're not just calling lighting providers out to say, hey, install 50 lights, and we don't really need 50, maybe we need 20. And so that's the whole point of us having a plan, and I think y'all have heard me say over and over again, when we have a plan, it helps us to not only plan for what our expenses are, but it helps us to budget in terms of what our needs are. Now, one of the things that we did go back and forth on, Commissioner Thomas, was how we were going to fund the lights that the board had already approved. I know that our transit department did reach out, because there are transit dollars that are available, but they're not available today for us to expend. And so Mr. Salters is still working with FTA, which is our Federal Transit Administration, to see if some of the funds that we received through 5307, which is a funding mechanism that he currently utilizes, if we can go back and recoup some of the costs. I assure you, my desire is not to have to depend on general fund, but we have to treat lights, and, and again, it's one of those things that we call a non-revenue expense. We're on the hook for it, the lights that are right here on Henry Parkway, we have to pay for those lights. So this is just an added expense that we'll need to revisit as we continue to navigate through the budget. Also keep in mind, Commissioner Thomas, we are doing our mid-year adjustment for our budget, and so this is one of the line items that will come back to this board in probably January or early February for us to revisit to determine how we're going to fund those accounts. And so that's, I hear you, I understand, we don't want to be dependent on our general fund, and so we will continue to look at other options that may be available for us to help fund these type of expenses.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Commissioner Barm, then I've got comments as well.
Yes, I don't think we're quite ready to move forward yet. I, I would like to see us look at those intersections and, and really have some type of study done, and, you know, my past history working with Georgia Power, they would come in, I would ask them to come in and look at a specific road in, in the city limits of McDonough, and they would make recommendations and use this kind of maybe every other pole. I did ride out Jonesboro Road, and I think that's really not what we want, because they put them actually on every pole, and then if there wasn't a pole, they just had big skips in there. So it really, there's a lot of places out Jonesboro Road that's dark, and there's a lot of places that's probably too well lit. I think we need to do a lot more planning when we do something. The next thing is, and we've been talking several years about striping our roads, and there's some roads in Henry County, and I'm not going to pick on Commissioner Wels, but I am going to pick on one of his roads. I went down Old Jackson Road, and, I mean, it's just terrible down that road, awful. For somebody my age, it's hard to see where the edge of the road is when you don't have no paint lines at all. So I think there's some things that we can do to make all our roads more safer than what they are, and I'm not sure lighting up everything is the, the answer, but I would like to see some type of intersection plan where we could light up these intersections where people have to stop and they're scared, and, and, and I'd like to see us focus a lot more on restriping our county roads and make it safer for all our citizens. I would like, and I've had this conversation with you before, to ask the question to the city of McDonough, you know, we have lights coming down Henry Parkway, and they stop right here at the admin building, but from here to 155 or here to the new road, we don't have any lighting. And to me, it is the city of McDonough's responsibility, because they provide street lighting for all their city residents, and we are part of the city. And when the city goes out here and annexes more land, then that ought to be part of the deal for them to put the street lighting up. Another example is Postmaster Drive, where there's no lighting at all from, from the post office all the way to 2081, and across the road, it's very dark all the way to the technical college. So those are two key areas that's inside the city of McDonough that we need to ask them to put lights up, and also, they need to be paying for these lights out here. If we're paying for them, they should pay for them, because they've paid for the rest of them in the city. So I would just like to see us move forward with a little more of a plan of what we're going to do, and maybe we, we put this thing off and y'all present something when you present the budget amendment time. But that's just my thoughts, thanks.
Okay, well, well, thank you as well. First of all, this is a discussion information-only presentation, and I'm really glad to hear several say that we need the plan. I do want to remind us, I, I was not at the meeting when the original list of all of these streets were requested for street lighting by the board, but again, the request was, let's find some crash data, because we really needed to make sure that we are literally, you know, working according to a county-wide plan. These projects, again, were not approved in the budget that we approved as a board, and that's why, again, I think it's best that we sit here, allow the plan to occur, allow us to come up with where are the most needs, because Henry County does need a lot of lighting throughout its county, but we've got to work within a budget and a planned budget. So again, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we need a plan, I'm, I'm glad we're looking at, you know, what's the best information. I'm the one that requested the crash data, because I felt like if anything, if we're going to need to, we got to prioritize these projects, because if there are people that are, you know, being killed, or there's lighting issues that are causing more accidents, then that's how you begin to prioritize if you're going to begin using funds that were not budgeted. And so, but I'd also remember, and I, I remember Mr. Baker, we asked some information some months ago, the crashes that we have, are they related to lighting, or are they related to some other matter? But again, my position is, I've always thought that we needed to have a, a county-wide street lighting plan so that we can, again, identify where the priorities are, and then we've got to plan for these with the taxpayers' budget, the money. We got to work through the budget and plan for it. So again, those are my questions. If everybody had any questions about why we're talking about the crash data, is it because I, I started, I asked that question in the meeting when we were trying to begin approving these, these, these dollars that have not yet been budgeted in this current budget, and then again, to begin moving towards how do we begin to light up Henry County in a prioritized and budgeted way? So again, any other questions or comments from the board before we move to the next item, which is a resolution to conduct a streetlight assessment? But this has been a really good discussion, so Commissioner Barm?
Yes, let's back to you. I know we had talked about looking into other counties and see how they fund these types of street lightings, and I don't know if we've done that, y'all, if you've got any information on that at all, but, you know, in the subdivision, like we talked about, you have areas where people actually live in those areas, they actually pay for the lights there, and I just wonder if we ought to look towards some type of, if we're going to move forward with this, does anybody have any kind of, like a street lighting program like the stormwater, where everybody pays a stormwater fee? And do we have something like that in place to, so we could find a way to actually afford to really light up Henry County like it needs to be?
So Commissioner Barm, we do, as you are aware, for residential developments, we do assess that back to all of the property owners on their property tax bill at the end of the year. And so if you live within a residential subdivision, or if you live within an area that's been platted as a subdivision, those streetlights are assessed back to the property owner. Now, for our high tra, highly-traveled commercial corridors, those are considered non-revenue streetlights that we do pay for through our general fund, and it's my understanding that a number of other jurisdictions pay for it through their general fund as well. One of the things that I mentioned to Commissioner Thomas is CIDs, the community improvement district, is another option that is available along these higher corridor areas, that if we create those CIDs, that's something that we can pass on to those commercial business owners. Again, it's considered hearts or streetscape, and that's something that you see a lot of areas, specifically, if I remember correctly, and I, I think the Braves Stadium was either through a CID or a TAD, I think it was a TAD, but that's also another option that is available where you are able to capture those funds and then put it back towards infrastructure, put it towards landscaping, put it towards streetscape. So that is an option that is available. But right now, because we don't have any CIDs in place, the only source of funding that we have would be through our general fund. And, and it, a lot of jurisdictions have streetlights throughout, but it is also something that's budgeted within their budget, and so that's one of the reasons we want to go ahead and do this plan, so that we can come to you all and make you all aware of this is how much it's going to cost us yearly to do the streetlights or to have streetlights in whatever areas that you all determine to be appropriate.
The other question, can you confirm that, that we are paying for these lights here within the city limits?
I'm looking at, because I think we are paying for those lights. It may be, keep in mind, there are certain roadways that we are responsible for because of the service delivery strategy, and I do believe that Henry Parkway is one of the roadways that we are responsible for all things pertaining to it. I will confirm, I will tell you in the new SDS, or at least what we've proposed back to the cities, hopefully that will take care of your issue, because we are going to pass on that cost specifically for roads that fall within the city limits, or at least we've asked, for roads that fall within the city limits for the cities to be responsible for those roadways. But I will confirm, Commissioner, and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, 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 thank you again, Mr. Mahajer, for this report, and of course, Mr. Baker, for this information, it is good, and thank you for bringing that forth because it was requested. So let's look forward to the next presentation now with Mr. Baker to talk about a resolution to authorize, well, to conduct a Henry County streetlight assessment study.
You just heard from Mr. Mahajer, D O, our DOT Director, our in-house staff assessment of the need for streetlights at 11 particular locations in Henry County. Now, at a previous BOC meeting, I understand the, the board expressed an interest to assess the need for streetlights beyond the 11 locations in, in the entire county. So that's a question before you, is this something that you want to proceed with or not? If yes, we do not have enough in-house manpower to conduct such an assessment county-wide. For that kind of assessment, we have to rely on a consultant service. Henry County has an existing on-call engineering services contract with a firm called VHB, and the VHB has indicated to us that it has the, the people and the technical capability to conduct such a study county-wide. The fee to conduct such a study county-wide will be $99,600 maximum. It may be less if the consultant can get some of the, the data it needs from the power companies without any cost, and if it does not have to go out into the field and collect data. Now, the plan is if we conduct this study, spending $99,600, the money will come from the DOT's current year budget, and if the money is not there in the department budget, the remaining funds will come from the county fund balance. So there is a draft resolution before you first to decide whether or not you want to proceed with a county-wide streetlight assessment study, and if you do, then you want to make a decision on the resolution to proceed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Thomas, and then Mr. Barm.
So, so we just spent about an hour talking about streetlights, and if you take a poll of the citizens in Henry County, I guarantee you 75% of the citizens want streetlights along our main thoroughfares. For years, it has been the commissioner's discretion to make decisions on what they wanted in their district. Spending $99 on a study to determine if a streetlight should go on Ferry Road or on Jonesboro Road makes absolutely no sense when commissioners talk to people in their communities, they hold town halls, and, and they get requests from, from the citizens on what they want. So I'm not in support of this, it makes absolutely no sense. I'm, I'm, I'm just going to ask if, that we table this and wait till next year, because I guarantee you that most of the, the commissioners that will be on this board next year supports lighting up corridors in their district.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Commissioner Thomas?
My question was, does the study includes future developments in different areas? That was my question. Will it consider what new developments are now in our books? Will it consider the land use plans and location of future, again, developments?
The consultant will do what we instruct the consultant to look at. We have come up with 21 factors to look into, including looking at crash data, proximity to various facilities, so if you want the consultant to look at future land use, we can add that as on the list.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner? Nothing. Commissioner Barm?
Yes, Sam, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of us lighting up Henry County. My question is, how are we going to pay for it? That's, that's the whole thing with me, is how are we going to fund it, how are we going to pay for it in the future? And I don't have no problem tabling it, but doing this assessment with this group here, is this something that Georgia Power and EMC and all these other power companies, can they do these assessments? Have we even contacted them to look at Henry County as a whole and, and make some kind of recommendation of what they think we could do, or is this some, something just to bypass them?
I think I already heard Sherry answer that question, that Georgia Power and all the other power companies are private businesses, they are looking to maximize their profit, they will do what, wherever we tell them to install streetlights. Where a consultant adds value is, give you suggestions or advice from an objective point of view, because the consultant has, doesn't have any profit motive, where, whether we install streetlights or not. They can look at 21 different criteria, including future land use, and then tell you where are higher priority, because we don't have enough money to light the entire county, we have to prioritize where streetlights are more important, where they're maybe somewhat less important. So that's where a consultant and a third party, outside party can add value, which Georgia Power or a power, any other power company may not give us an objective advice.
Well, I'll stay with you saying that Georgia Power is trying to get the most bang for the buck, but I, I, I respect Georgia Power, and I, the experience that I've had with Georgia Power, if I told them that I wanted to light a certain area, they would work with me and help determine where those lights should go, and, and the number of lights, and how far apart they should be and all, and I don't think, I know Georgia Power's in the money of, I mean, in the business of selling electricity, but at the same time, I think they are excellent service to communities like us. Thank you.
Okay, and, and thank you. My comments, we need to light up Henry County, but again, as Commissioner Barm has just stated, how we do this is going to be important. This all came about trying to light up all of these roads after the budget has been approved by this board, and we're right in the midst still of trying to figure out where we're going to be due to COVID-19. We already know that the county management team is in the process of updating the budget, so again, whether it is through a consultant or whether it is commissioners and staff working together to talk about how the lighting is going to occur throughout this county, that doesn't matter. The, the point here is, we need to come up with how we're going to do it, and it needs to be approved in a way so that it doesn't potentially cause an. doesn't potentially cause an impact to our, our, our general, our, our general fund and even our, our excess fund, our reserves. So again, we need to light up the county, we need to do it in a planned way. How we get there is just so that we plan it out so that again, we're not causing us to get into a situation where we're going to have to use emergency funds that the taxpayers should, should not have to endure. There's a process by which we can do this, and this is what we're talking about right now. So again, my thoughts are whether it's, you know, paying this consultant, I think $99,000 is a lot, but at the same time, I would rather us at least come up with some way that we can do this without actually having to use general funds. And even this $99,000 could potentially have to come out of our, our reserves, and I don't like that part of it. So again, I would rather plan for it, and you know, as we should for everything that we show, that we're trying to spend tax dollars for. The time that we should be using unbudgeted funds is when it's an emergency. That is when we should use unbudgeted funds from our taxpayers. So that, that's, that's not to you, that is a conversation that I'm having. So I know I was looking at you when I made that comment, but that's my position about it all. Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
We should not be making decisions to pay consultants in a lame duck period. Let's wait until we get the new board and bring this back to the Board of Commissioners. $99,000, it makes no, this, it makes absolutely zero sense to spend $99,000 on a consultant to tell us, we need street, we, we need or don't need streetlights on the main thoroughfare, or we need a streetlight at this corner, and then go down three more miles and put a streetlight at the next corner. It makes absolutely zero sense to me. So why would we pay somebody $99,000, especially in a lame duck period? All decisions regarding paying consultants should be off the table until January 1st.
Well, I would like to make a comment just out of, out of full disclosure. I am a previous retiree, well, I am a retiree of Georgia Power Company, but that's why, again, I think the process should be planned out in some way, and I'm not in favor of picking any vendor at this time for something like this without having a plan of where, where we want to go as, as, as a county. So again, I just wanted to make that clear for the record. But my position, again, and I would be in favor of postponing this until whenever the budget is going to be approved, so that it is included in the budget, so that we know what impact it's going to have to the current mileage rate that we have. So, thank you. All right, Commissioner Thomas?
I'd like to put forth the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other discussions before we open the floor for a motion? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'd like to put forth a motion that we tabled this item for further discussions and budgetary concerns.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, did you get that, or county clerk? Okay, all right, thank you. So that was a four to one. All right, well, thank you for that discussion, and we'll now move into the next segment of our agenda, which is a public hearing. And this is a resolution to approve the abandonment and declaring surplus of a portion of Fuke Road in District 2, and we'll invite up Mr. Simmons for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Yes, as mentioned, this is a public hearing to request to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Fuke Road, also known as Fuke Drive, to abandon a portion of Fuke Road and Fuke Drive right-of-way as shown on Exhibit A. The request is to, to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Fuke Road, also known as Fuke Drive, in right-of-way as shown on attached plat marked Exhibit A, as track day, and more particularly described on the attached plat as the, in the amount of 32,221 square feet, which equates to 0.74 acres. The area requested to be abandoned and declared surplus has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it. And the abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald on October 24th and October 28th of this year, and all adjoining property owners have been notified by mail. And hopefully you can see that, that's the area that's more north and south, or straight up the page is the area that we're looking to abandon this morning. The other hatched area is not part of today's abandonment. And I'll take any questions, and it is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions before we begin the public hearing? Okay, hearing done. We will begin the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak in favor will be granted a total of three minutes. And we do ask that after that, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be getting, given an opportunity of three minutes to speak in opposition. So at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Okay, we're now open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of abandoning a portion of Fuke Road. Please come forward. You will have a total of three minutes if you can state your name and address, please.
I'm Brian McMeans. I own a piece of property on this end of the Futch Road. When the county needed to widen Jodaco Road, I understood that it had to be done. They took, condemned my property. And in the process of condemning it, the state offered me a price that was so low, I owed the bank more than they wanted to give me. So they had tried to include this portion of ground with the whole parcel, and I couldn't accept any offer. I had to go to court in order to, to get it. But they left that piece, and I've been paying taxes on it. And my constitutional rights allow me to use my property for its highest and fullest value, and I need to have a right-of-way so that I can get back to my quarter acre that, that's left.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the abandonment of Fuke Road, please come forward now. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, this does end the public hearing aspect, and we'll now open this up for questions from the board or comments. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
How does this abandonment affect the gentleman that just said he need access to his property, David? Will he still have access to it, or what does that mean?
Yeah, I'm trying to think I can point to something. Just over here. Yeah, that'll work. Okay. I think Mr. McMeans owns this parcel right here. And this is old roadbed of where Fuke used to be before Georgia DOT widened Jodaco and realigned Fuke to this location. So this is Mr. McMeans' property, and so he touches it at this corner, and technically, I think this little piece here would still also be considered Fuke Road, which is just below our abandonment. I do think probably, as he was speaking, when Georgia DOT bought this right-of-way, they bought, they basically bought the access rights from I-75 to about this location over near Fuke. So as far as vehicular access, he would not be able to get to his property from Jodaco. I think there's probably a fairly decent grade separation, or a difference in grade there also. So I think he's basically saying he needs this road to be in to access his parcel, which is outlined here.
What is the condition of that, that land now? Is it just open land? Is it paved? What is its present condition?
When this was Fuke, I believe this was all paved. When Georgia DOT redid the alignment over here, it must have included asphalt removal. There is, as you can kind of see, an old dirt road, roadbed that does come down to and touch the corner of Mr. McMeans' property.
So, can I ask him?
Yes.
Mr. Mc... May I ask the gentleman that just spoke, would you come forth once, please, sir? Yes. Do you presently have any other access to this property?
I go on the road that they've abandoned, I back in there to get to my property. But I want to sell it, and eventually somebody will need to have a way to get to it, unless the person that buys the rest of the property wants to buy that also. I had two commercial buildings that I was renting that were, you know, taken down when they widened the bridge, and that piece was left.
So you're really not using the property now, but you want to make sure if you need to decide to sell it, you have access to it?
I still have some chain link fencing and some things that I'd eventually get off of the property, but my plan would be to sell it to whoever needed it for the rest of that area.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? So I just wanted to clarify, just, I guess in my own mind, so by abandoning this, he basically will, he'll still have access to the road, to his property, but as far as it being maintained, or, you know, for now, the future for, for future property owners, they'll be responsible for it. I'm, I'm just trying to under, get a good handle on my understanding of this.
The old section of road, we haven't been maintaining, to my knowledge. It's just the paved. He's got frontage on Jodaco. His issue is, though, that state bought his access rights. So vehicular-wise, he cannot get to that property off of Jodaco. But I guess, and I think his contention is, he needs what's we're proposing to abandon to be able to access his property vehicular-wise, which that seems to be accurate.
So does he want us to abandon the property or not?
I think he's against abandoning the property. I think, yes.
As he stated, I just wanted to be clear. Okay.
So to help clarify a little bit, if you abandon what is shown as track day up on the screen, that will no longer be a public road. The county owns it, we, we still own it, and the next item on the agenda is authorization from the board for us to sell that little strip of land. So one of, a solution could be, and I'm not going to suggest you do this because I, I'm not suggesting you don't do it either, but a solution could be that you abandon the road so it's no longer a public road, and the general public can no longer travel on it. And perhaps when we, when you authorize us to convey title to that, you could require that we convey title subject to an easement in favor of that property owner, which would allow him to travel across that. Now, it's not maintained, and I don't think the county is going to, I, I, I'm guessing a little on David's part and management's part. I don't think we want to get into the business of maintaining that road because we've been hands-off of it for years now. But that, that would be a solution that would maintain possibly legal access, I'm not sure. Based on the maps I've seen, it's a little unclear about, to me, whether or not that road to be abandoned really provides legal access to that property or not, but it's probably providing practical access. So, you know, I think the, there is potentially a resolution that could achieve our goal of taking that really, really old Fuked Road, which is, for all practical purposes, it's not treated like a public road, take it off our public road, road rolls, and then rather than selling it outright, we could sell it subject to an easement on behalf of Mr. McMeans. I don't want to suggest that's acceptable to him. I, I think that would be his determination to make, but that is something that, that might achieve everybody's goals in this instance.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Thomas, anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Up on other parts of this road, are there other property owners along that strip as well, David, before you get down to his?
North of here, yes.
Okay.
Now, but they're, they're getting access through the current paved Fuke Road.
But behind there, David.
Towards this way?
No, go north.
Okay.
Yep, come back down.
All right.
Keep coming down.
All right.
Now, go on the property that you're talking, are the other property, okay, those property owners there.
On each side of the road?
Yes.
That's one, basically, that's one property owner, and they're basically asking for the abandonment.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they'd likely be, if we authorized a sale, that would likely be the most applicable buyer for that property.
Okay, then you're saying, Patrick, if we did such a thing, we should make the sale with the understanding that they will allow some form of easement to the properties near the south part of that?
We, we could make it a little more than an understanding. We would make it, we could make it an enforceable easement. So that would be a way to preserve whatever access rights exist down that road now, and we could make it specific to Mr. McMeans' property.
Okay.
Not necessarily specific, specific to him individually, but specific to that piece of property. So if he were to sell that piece of property, those access rights would travel with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other, okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So I understood that he couldn't get to this piece of property. If we abandoned this, he can't get to the piece of property with a vehicle. Is that correct?
Correct. He would not be able to drive there legally.
He's not, we're not basically land-locking him. He just not, don't have accessibility to his property.
He might have the right, well, he would have the right to apply to whoever, is that, is Jodaco, is it still state rail, or is it, whoever, whoever's road, Jodaco is?
We'd have to check with GDOT. Often, GDOT controls to the first median opening, which is Fuke. So we would have to touch base as to who does that. But when GDOT bought the right-of-way for Jodaco, they bought the access rights from any frontage from I-75 ramps down to the eastern side of Fuke.
Basically, we're going, he's going to be landlocked.
For all practical purposes, yes, he would be landlocked.
So, does, how does that put the county in the position? If we landlock you, what position that put us in?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not the, it's not the position you want to be in, right? So, and not only from a practical stand, from a legal standpoint or a practical standpoint. I, I don't think anybody, any board member wants to harm a citizen in that kind of a direct way. And that would be the reason I would say that perhaps an easement, when we, if we sell, we also preserve on behalf of that piece of property, an easement to allow that travel. The real harm, and, and I, I say this, and Mr. McMeans may remember, quite frankly, I represented Georgia DOT when they acquired this right-of-way. The real harm to Mr. McMeans came then. I mean, he, he lost a substantial amount of acreage, two businesses, two buildings, maybe more than that, I don't remember. And he was left with this quarter acre. In a perfect world, GDOT would have bought that quarter acre from him. In a perfect world, that's what would have, would have happened. It didn't happen, and I couldn't tell, I don't know why. I, I have no idea why it didn't happen, or whether it was, there were any discussions about it happening. But that piece of property is left in a troublesome condition, whether or not we abandon that road. It's, it's a troublesome position now, primarily because, I mean, you've seen the condition of that road. It's, it's probably at best difficult to travel. So...
So it may be at a point where he can't get to his property anyway if it wasn't an easement, if nobody's maintaining it, correct?
And there, I, I suppose there is the possibility, probably not likely, that if he were to apply to, for access onto Jodaco, perhaps, but it's probably, topography's probably difficult. It's such a narrow piece of property, you probably can't put a driveway in, I'm guessing. So, and that's even if he would, that property would qualify. There's all kind of regulations about where access points can be, how far from other access points. And that, I think, by all indications of everything I know about how GDOT does those things, you typically wouldn't put driveways between the Interstate Exchange and the First Road. That's not the ideal That's not the ideal place to put them.
And it's the cost factor as well. If he had to go through that, it's the permitting and the cost factor, then that's, it's not, it's pretty expensive to do that as well, so.
But there is a road that is no longer in use, a road that has not been in use for years now, which is this old Fuke Road. From a public perspective, the only way, and it's important to keep in mind, the only way to get to that old Fuke Road is to go up the new Fuke Road, you know, the new part that's crosshatched, up that little curb, and make what is almost a U-turn down onto the old Fuke Road. That's not ideal access for anybody. So, I mean, it is, and it's, it's not an ideal situation today. Taking the, taking, making the old, old Fuke Road no longer a public road would make it that much worse. But to solve that problem, you could preserve an easement in favor of Mr. McMeans or any future owner. And then when he goes to sell it, if he goes to sell it, he could also sell that easement right along with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and I think I have one other clarifying question, so I don't know, so the, this was obviously discussed when GDOT purchased the properties and the role alignment came, and were funds made to this property owner for the, this?
Well, just like, just like when the county buys right of way, there is always, the county always offers the property owner money. GDOT always offers the property owner money. In this instance, Mr. McMeans was not satisfied with the money that was offered to him.
Okay, that's right.
So went to court, I, I don't, I just, sadly, I don't remember, Mr. McMeans probably does. I don't know if we actually had to try this case. Right, there was a jury trial, and the jury awarded money. In theory, you know, the idea of a condemnation case is that the award you get compensates you for all harm to your property. So in theory, he was compensated for all harm caused to the property in the condition it sits today. And that was leaving Fuke Road as it is. Now, I'm willing to bet no appraiser gave any value to the property because of the old Fuke Road. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess they didn't. I'm gonna guess that most appraisers probably considered that remaining quarter acre to have nominal value. I, I don't remember what the, what the, any of the appraisers said, but I would, I would be willing to bet that, that the jury believed it compensated him for all of the harm caused. But I, I, you know, the reasonable minds differ about how those, those cases, the outcome of those cases. But in theory, he would have been compensated, yes.
But he didn't really, because of all the court proceedings, he didn't accept the compensation.
Well, he, he accepted what the jury awarded to him.
He did accept it.
Yeah, well, that's because you don't really have a choice there. Once the jury awards it, that's your compensation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
It's in District Two, yes.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? All right.
We, we may want to just give you a heads up that in the, in the near future, the relatively near future, there will be another application to abandon this portion of the road and replace it, I guess, with the, with the, what we all refer to as the Western Parallel, that'll go more like that.
Right.
So you'll be seeing more abandonment, and that would further, you know, that, that's, so you're gonna see, you're gonna see that abandonment as well in the next, I think we just saw an email today from GDOT, or their, in the next few months, that's probably the best we can tell you.
Right. The existing Fuke that's paved right now, Georgia DOT owns it, but they're in process of doing a quick claim deed to the county, so we would be the entity that would abandon and dispose of that property also, but it's not ready yet.
All right, thank you. On Commissioner Wilson?
If you abandon the additional, is that gonna give him non-access to the easement that we're looking at?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, you know, you're, you're further separating, you're further separating that property. Now, it may be that access comes around this, maybe further up. I don't know where that road goes further up, but.
At some point, the likelihood is commercial development, and there could be a cross-access easement anywhere through the commercial development to get to his property, and that's what would have to be in place. And we'll just have to be mindful to make sure that is there if he keeps, if Mr. McMeans still owns property at that point in time, or leading up to that.
So there's a possibility, though, with all this going on, he could be landlocked.
Yes, I mean, ultimately, it falls to you. I mean, this is sort of the stop, the stopgap for that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Holmes?
Commissioner Clemens wants to table this, because she had to take off early.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so if you will, any other questions or comments before we open the floor for a motion? Okay, here and now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move the table.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we'll now move into the next item. And this is a resolution authorizing the sale or search of real property for Henry County Department of Transportation, and Mr. Simmons, you're up for that one as well.
Okay, well, this one is definitely related to the previous one. It was an authorization for the board to, for the sale of the county surplus property. If it had been abandoned, as you can see in the background summary, if the abandonment declaration of surplus was approved, this is to authorize the sale. Obviously, it was tabled, so I don't know what action you.
Again, go through the process, okay? So are there any questions or comments regarding this? The floor is now open for a motion.
Table.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, any further discussion? All in favor to table? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's for it. Okay, well, now move into the next item, which is an ordinance from our planning and zoning to amend the multiple sections of the Henry County Code of Ordinances regulating development within the highway corridor overlay district.
Good morning, Chair Wood.
Good evening, and this is Mr. Stacy Jordan Root, our chief planner, so welcome this morning.
Thank you. This, this item had come before the board this summer, on August the 4th, for discussion. And so we've got some very good comments, and this is a public hearing intended to implement the, the changes that were discussed on August the 4th. Within your exhibits, there is a summary sheet that notates all of the changes that we are proposing. Just to hit a couple of highlights, one of the things that we were talking about were the, the fact that subdivisions were becoming, it was becoming apparent that some of the residential subdivisions were problematic in the overlay. Namely, we had an instance at Upchurch Road where the, there was an actual variance to exempt certain provisions of the overlay as, as it regarded that proposed RA subdivision. So we're proposing the RA subdivisions just be exempt from the overlay. So that's one of the major changes that we're proposing. Another change is regarding the width of sidewalks internal to subdivisions. And we had noted that the sidewalks that were indicated just would not fit within a 50-foot right of way. So another one of the changes that we're proposing are five-foot sidewalks with a seven-foot landscape strip for the required pedestrian lights and street trees. Also, one of the conflicts that were perceived in the overlay is between street lights and pedestrian lights, and you don't need both. And so part of the changes that we're proposing is that street lights are not required, where pedestrian lights are required. Another proposal that we're making is for pedestrian lights to be included in a streetlight district, so that the charges for the electricity can be included on tax bills just the same that streetlights are. So as far as the, the portions of the ordinance that are meant to be changed, we're looking at portions of Chapter Four and portions of Chapter Eight. Also included in this is a brand-new overlay utility placement standard, which actually shows the seven-foot landscape strip with your street trees and pedestrian lights, as well as the five-foot sidewalks internal to subdivisions. So with all of that, I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Would you go back to your slide for your recommendations, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm very concerned about the fact you want to reduce sidewalks to five feet.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of the reasons is, we're trying to make sure we build our subdivision community healthy, which means lots of people will be walking. And now that we're in a COVID world, and COVID will not go anywhere, we will learn to live in a COVID world. Be it, that's a, whatever they call it, I hate to even say the term. Be it some alternative health procedures, but we will learn to live in a COVID world, and people want to get away from each other. So I'm really saying that sidewalks should be wider and not narrow. The problem with the street lights and pedestrian lights, I can support, because you don't need all that lighting. Because at night, it looks like day in subdivisions, when you have street lights and sidewalk lights. You only need one or the other. You don't need both of them. So I can support the pedestrian lights. But I am very concerned about that sidewalk, and we want to promote health of communities. And I think we need to keep our sidewalks between eight and 10 feet wide. There again, so people can walk along, aside each other, coming to each other, and keep the proper distance that's needed. There again, some of our plans will have to be adjusted based upon the world that we're living in now. So those are my concerns about this proposal.
And if I, if I could address a couple of those points just really quickly, I, I concur with that, and I, I believe I understand exactly the, the comments. In 2018 was the last time we made changes to the overlay, and part of those changes was to widen the requirement for sidewalks within the subdivisions. And what we did was to apply a collector standard to a local street. So the collector standard will remain eight-foot sidewalks with an eight-foot landscape strip. But when we applied that standard to the local streets back in 2018, we didn't consider the fact that the utilities would have to be placed, hence the new utility placement standard, but also the fact that the eight-foot sidewalks will not fit in a 50-foot wide right of way, which is indicated for a local street, versus an 80-foot right of way, which is indicated for collector. So collector streets will continue to require an eight-foot sidewalk, but the eight-foot sidewalks just will not fit within the 50-foot right of way width for local streets. And if our county DOT has any additional information, I'd be pleased to hear from the county DOT.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to comment on the sidewalks. Right now, most subdivisions have four-foot wide sidewalks, and typically on both sides of the street. So if you have a five-foot sidewalk both sides, in, in some effect, you have 10-foot sidewalk along the road, it's just split half and half. If you wanted wider sidewalks, utilities will not go under our sidewalks, they have to be outside of it. So that pushes either a very large easement. This one includes a 10-foot utility easement for putting the utilities in. Our current standard for non-overlay is a five-foot utility easement, and that's just for setting the transformer box or the water meter, that sort of thing. So we have to get them more width to put their utilities in. They're literally putting powers at 18 feet back a curb. They are six feet out of right of way in a utility easement. So the thing there is, the wider you get, it's probably less environmentally friendly. You have a creek crossing, or basically, you're causing for the road to be a lot wider. The only thing that I could think of to where a wider sidewalk could be in the sidewalk, in the right of way, and still work with the utilities, is the trees would have to go. So it's wider sidewalk, no tree, or five-foot sidewalk with a tree. The eight, seven-foot landscape strip, we tried to model it after a utility standard we did for Hair and Bay, and it has an eight-foot landscape strip. So we gave up a foot there, which is concerning, because most of our curb sidewalk issues are caused by street trees. So we have to be kind of hawkish now on what kind of trees go in. But, so we, we changed the landscape strip to seven instead of eight, just trying to get everything to fit. And everybody's front property pins will also be at 12-foot back a curb. So if we push the sidewalk out further, I've got no real way to set front property pins for properties if we keep a 50-foot right of way. So, but it, it's a wider grading, and particularly if you're doing a neighborhood with real small front setbacks, already have utilities out at 10 feet out of the right of way. If they're at a 20-foot setback, they're only 10 feet from the nearest utility.
Okay.
So that's just some concerns that have kind of come up as we've kind of chewed this over, just as information.
Well, you know, it's good that you explained the fact that you have to have the narrow sidewalks for utilities to go underground. That makes a big difference, because communities really don't like to see those utilities going from pole to pole up high. So that's interesting. So thank you for telling me that. I didn't know that, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and in all honesty, the, in most subdivisions, nearly any new one, most time the utilities are, they're still underground, but they still got to have their separations. They don't like being near each other. We thought we had it worked out, and we had to go back and push power out another foot, so the Water Authority was comfortable with where, with where they are, so.
And then I think the alternative is what you also stated, David, that you can do five feet on each side. So basically, you do have 10 feet in doing your development, okay.
Typically, they'll have a five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we've got Commissioner Barn before we, this is a public hearing as well, so we'll go to Commissioner Barn, and we'll see if there's any other commissioners, and then we'll start the public hearing.
I think David pretty much answered all the questions. I just had a comment about it, and I, I think it's a great plan, and, and this works with utilities and all, and we still got the wider sidewalks on our larger corridors and that sort of thing. And I like this, and I guess all the utilities, all, everybody signed off on this, and.
We, we heard from both EMCs, Stillworth's trying to run it down with Georgia Power, but I think they'll be fine. If they're not, we'll come back for anything that's within their region. But I, I would hope that it should work for them also.
And the five-foot sidewalk's gonna work a lot better with the trees, because a lot of times, you get the wider sidewalk you get, the more tree roots problems you have, and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, the less room you give the tree, the more you're asking for.
It looks good to me.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
The one thing I was, I, I talked to you about, Stacy, was connecting to the, to the existing requirements from the commercial area from years back. When we take the new one and connect it to those, these sidewalks and these commercial areas are probably four-foot wide, minimum trees with sod. But when we hit, and it's like on Highway 81, we know all that's going to disappear several years from now, because it's going to widen. But for the rest of the county with, that goes, that falls under this, and when you connect this new overlay to that, it's going to look awkward. Is there any provisions that they could be exempt when they start to? And I'd say, for instance, on Highway 81 East, there's commercial, then there's residential, which eventually is going to be commercial. And is there any provisions that when they connect to that, they don't have to fall under the new overlay? They could continue what's already there? But I know it's not going to be affecting 81 East because of that, but other parts of the overlay? That's, that's what concerns me about these property owners having to meet these when they should be able to have the option, or give a provision where they can just connect to what's already there.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. There's built into this overlay the ability for staff to look at these things on a case-by-case basis and make necessary adjustments.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so we will allow 10 minutes for those who wish to speak in favor of this proposal, this resolution, and then 10 minutes for those that wish to speak in opposition. So at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this resolution to, to amend the multiple sections regarding the highway overlay corridor overlay district? Again, is there anyone wishing to speak? Again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please come forward now. Okay, well, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Um, to please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. That does conclude our, our public hearing for this matter. So at this time now, um, we'll open it back to the board. Are there any other questions or comments before we open up for a motion? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Um, any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Rudy Seau. Okay, now we'll move into the next item, um, which is, um, the resolution requesting the approval of the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Programs Committee's recommended submissions. And we'll invite up, uh, there we go, Ms. Kimberly Monas, um, our grants administrator. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm presenting another summary update of the Henry County Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Programs progress. For new viewers, and as a reminder, in order to award funding under this program, the county established a review committee comprised of one voting member of each district and the chair for a total of six members. Applications are vetted by the Grants Administration Unit, presented to the review committee for evaluation, and their recommendations are those that I present to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Although we encourage all eligible Henry County businesses and, excuse me, small businesses and nonprofits to apply for this grant opportunity, please be advised that the baseline qualification of this funding is the ability to show a negative impact from COVID-19. Since relaxing the application restrictions, I have seen a number of small business applications for startups and two nonprofit applications for strictly operational support that has nothing to do with COVID-19. These grants are not permitted to be awarded to startup businesses or to businesses that may be struggling for reasons unrelated to COVID-19, such as an initial lack of capital, unsuccessful marketing, or inability to compete in the marketplace. Nonprofit applications must provide direct services to Henry County citizens, not just overhead costs to keep the nonprofit at status quo. As a reminder, small businesses are eligible for up to $10,000 with post-award approved reimbursement submissions. Nonprofit applicants do not have a request ceiling as long as they can prove capability and competency in administering a program of the size and scope that they are requesting. These are the application numbers. A total of 133 small business and 40 nonprofit applications have been received year-to-date. 120 small business and 34 nonprofit applications have been vetted by my grant administration unit, and 115 of those small businesses and all 34 of the nonprofits have been evaluated by the review committee thus far. This board has previously approved 26 small businesses and six nonprofits. Today, there is 11 small businesses and one nonprofit on the agenda. And on November the 17th, I'll be presenting 14 small businesses and four nonprofits. The remaining applications are still in various states of processing. We have seen an increase in applications of about 8% for small businesses since the last meeting. No increase in percentage of nonprofit applications. These are the small businesses that are, uh, requested for approval today. We have two pages for small businesses. If you'll notice, there are three at the top that have asterisks. Those are businesses that were originally denied under PPP or the franchise restriction that has been lifted by this board under, uh, Resolution 20-245. So therefore, they went back before the review committee and were then approved. So those are your two. I do have a request for an amendment to my presentation that was put before you by the county clerk. Unfortunately, it was published before I had a chance to catch it. This nonprofit was reviewed by the review committee, uh, was approved by the review committee, and I was in the middle of writing the, uh, award acceptance and their budget, and inadvertently got left off of the posting to the, um, to the website. So I'm asking for, um, you all to amend to allow this nonprofit to be, um, considered for award today. Funds awarded through this resolution, if approved today by the board, would be $370,000 for small businesses and $1,123,708 for nonprofits. Not this one. That's the total. So potential awards, uh, awarded, recommended by the review committee will come before you on the 17th. That would be another 140,000 small businesses, $140,000 for small businesses and $146,885 for nonprofits. Now, a total. If you, uh, approve the, uh, ones before you today and the ones that are going to come before you on the 17th, and the reason I put them all together is because that's what the review committee has provided so far. And I know that you all would like to know how much money has been, um, awarded or is attempting to be awarded. Thus far, small businesses would be $510,000, which is approximately 20% of the approved 2.5 million small business appropriation. And there would be $1,270,593, which is approximately 51% of the approved 2.5 million nonprofit appropriation. So, any more information? New applications have modestly increased already. But with the board's approval of Resolution 2245 two weeks ago, I expect those numbers to increase daily as more small businesses and nonprofits learn of their eligibility and the availability of funds. We are working with the review committee and the Henry County Communications to provide more clarity to the public. For example, to those who are not eligible for either one of these programs, but may qualify as individuals for direct assistance under one of the nonprofit awardees. Reimbursement requests have begun. The Small Business Groups One and Two, Nonprofit Group A that you approved on September 15th and October 6th. Awards have gone out for Group Three from October 20th and are being prepared for Group Four in anticipation of what you may approve this morning. There is increasing activity at every stage of the process. In order to ensure audit compliance and lawful reimbursement, the Grants Administration Unit is already spending more than 20 hours a week scrutinizing eligible expenses and proofs of payment and returning ineligible expense requests back to the awardee, such as personal car payments, payments to relatives who are not employees, and personal clothing allowances. We are diligent about protecting the integrity of the process and taxpayer funds. What you have before you today is a resolution to accept the review committee's recommendations to award 11 small businesses and one nonprofit for funding. Staff requests the board approve the, excuse me, the review committee's recommendations to award these small businesses and nonprofits with COVID-19 funding. I will take any questions.
Okay, I know, uh, Commissioner Holmes has a question.
Can you go back to the pre, uh, previous slide?
Yes, sir. This one or the one before?
No, I was looking at the, um, the, uh, award amounts, cause I noticed on the, um, the next slide, you had up to 41,000 for that nonprofit. Can you explain what that means to me?
Yes, I can. Um, this is actually the one that I was preparing the budget for, which is why it was inadvertently left off. This applicant originally, uh, asked for operational expenses as well as, um, expenses for direct services. And the review committee determined that they wanted to fund this particular project, but only for registrations for applicants. So for the, um, young persons who are going to be taking part of this program, Henry County would reimburse this nonprofit for those registrations, um, for those particular youth. Um, and that's what they did. So up to $41,000, could he, he would be able to, um, the director of this nonprofit would be able to get reimbursed for the registrations up to $41,000 for these youth.
Okay, I thought our threshold was up to 10,000.
That's for a small business, sir. This is a nonprofit.
I didn't know it was any different, um, to nonprofits. All right.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, all right, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, sir.
To follow up on Commissioner Holmes' question, uh, the original language for nonprofit was up to 41,000. Is that correct?
No, sir, there's no threshold for the, for the, for nonprofits, as long as they can prove capability and competency. No threshold, sir.
Okay, I think.
Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
You know what you shared with us today in the summary, basically, uh, percentages of small businesses we've cert, have helped us serve and nonprofits. Do any of these numbers of small businesses include the dollars that were allotted to the chamber?
I'm not aware of any dollars that were allotted to the chamber, ma'am.
Does the chamber do any type of disbursement on our behalf as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, um, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Wilson, are you making a second?
I have a question.
Okay, uh, can I get a second, and then we'll go into?
Okay, we got, okay, a second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Thank you.
So we got to add this one, though. The nonprofit has to be added because it's not part of the original.
It is part of my paperwork, yes, sir. I inadvertently gave the wrong information to the county clerk to publish on the board.
So it's not on the regional agenda, so we're gonna have to add this? We're gonna have to?
Yes, sir.
We can include it in the motion. So you'll need to amend the motion to add this one nonprofit.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right, um, so Commissioner Holmes?
On the previous slide, you have the location of the, uh, small businesses. Um, there is no information about this, um, this nonprofit, and I've never heard of it before.
It's county-wide, sir. All of the nonprofits are, are, serve county-wide. They may have a particular target audience of seniors or youth or homeless or something, but the nonprofits are required, ma'am.
The question that's being asked is, where is it located? Is it in the city limits?
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. I thought you meant your service. Uh, yes, sir. It, yes, sir. It's located in the city of McDonough.
Okay, I have never heard of that nonprofit before. Can we get a little bit more information on it?
Um, I can. Let's see, if I can remember.
So what we may need to do?
We can do, I, I was gonna suggest that, you know, maybe we can, can amend the motion. I mean, keep the motion we have and bring this one back if we need more information. Okay.
Just look at this a little bit closer.
Cause you seem, seem like you have the information. So, um, so, okay, so we had a motion, a second and a discussion. So we have a suggestion to revise the motion, so. Commissioner Thomas, I think you started, made the motion. You did, Commissioner Thomas. Is it okay to revise the motion, Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, to include this nonprofit or to exclude it?
To exclude it.
Okay.
Later.
All right, that's what I was trying, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list presented before us, excluding the nonprofit for additional information.
Okay, we have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Okay, that, um, is five to zero. Okay, all right, thank you.
Chair, um, in the previous meeting, Commissioner Clemens requested that I speak with, um, the, our judicial partners regarding the commercial dispossessories and about having this program be part of their, um, uh, something that the, the judicial partners could promote. Um, and I was asked to come back with that information. Would you like me to speak to that, or shall I speak separately? That was a?
County team, yes, I guess so, yeah.
I know that was a question that was posed by Commissioner Clemens. Um, so if you all want us to wait until the next board meeting, or we can send something out formally to the board, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, and we need to make sure it's an agenda item as well, in my opinion. I mean, I.
Pose, and we haven't answered, so it's just a follow-up.
And then since Commissioner Clemens asked it, I would rather her be present for it.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but meanwhile, you can still reach out to her as well, but then again, we can bring it to the board as, as a formal board update as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, well, thank you for that. And now we're moving to the next item, which is a res, resolution authorizing the refund of the application fee paid by the Lake Dow Home Owners Association in connection with the application for a special service district for dam maintenance and repair.
Uh, good morning. So, um, I want to walk back and give a little historical perspective on what you're being asked to do, just so you get the full picture. Back in 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved an ordinance that authorized homeowners associations to make application to create a special tax district for the purposes of maintaining, repairing, or upgrading dams located within subdivisions that have homeowners associations. And the reason for that is there's a number of dams, a number of lakes within homeowners associations where the dams are either being categorized as Class 1 dams, which means if they fail, that there would be a loss of life, or they are in states of disrepair, and the homeowners association is either unable or unwilling on its own to take the appropriate measures to ensure that the dam is either downgraded to a lower classification or repaired and maintained such that the EPD doesn't seek enforcement against them. The first, uh, subdivision that came to the board to make that application was Lake Dow. In December of 2017, Lake Dow made an application to create a special tax district within the Lake Dow subdivision for the purpose of performing maintenance, repair work on the dam that creates Lake Dow. They accompanied that application with an application fee in the amount of $35,000. The purpose of the application was to create a special tax district that would have included the property owners within Lake Dow to then borrow money by use of the county's ability to issue general obligation bonds, which are bonds supported by property taxes. That property tax and that bond would have been limited to the special tax district. So the, the county would have conducted a referendum within that district if the voters approved it. The county could have borrowed the money, used that money to make repairs and maintenance to the dam, and then assessed the property taxes on those property owners sufficient to satisfy the debt. So that application was submitted. The county staff did a significant amount of work in reviewing repair feasibility estimates. We met with, um, the, essentially the participants in the bond market with your bond council, with, uh, your fiscal agents, your financial agents that help you with the bonds. And we determined that a mini general obligation bond just wouldn't work. It just wasn't feasible for that type of property and that type of project. And e-essentially, from that point forward, there was very little action taken with, by the county with respect to moving that project forward. However, in, uh, June of 2019, there was presented to the board a proposal to authorize retaining an engineer to provide, uh, design and engineering services for dam repairs, both at Lake Dow and at another, number of other, uh, lakes throughout the county. That resolution was tabled, and I don't believe it has come back for the board. In June of this year, Lake Dow withdrew their original application to create the special tax district within Lake Dow. I believe, what I've been told is Lake Dow's determined that they're going to undertake the dam repairs and dam maintenance on their own. And they have requested a refund of the $35,000 application fee. The $35,000 application fee was intended to cover some specific costs. It wasn't a number just pulled out of the air. It was intended to cover some initial engineering assessments. It was intended to cover the cost of the referendum that would have had to happen. It was intended to cover some of the attorney fees that would have been incurred in putting all of this together. And it was intended to essentially, intended to essentially manage that process from its inception until when the bonds were issued. That never happened, obviously. Uh, so the county has never undertaken any of those things that the application fee was intended to cover. And the county, to my understanding, and Sherry and I have had this conversation, we've looked, the county has not paid any money out to any consultants, any engineers, any attorneys, or anyone else in furtherance of creating the Lake Dow Special Tax District. So the resolution before you asked for you to make a determination as to whether or not that application fee will be refunded or will not be refunded. And I can tell you sitting here, the county has not out any money. The county has not paid any, any money out. The county has not incurred any, any direct costs. The county has. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be honest if we didn't tell you the county has expended staff time, staff energy on, in for, in furtherance of this project. But it just didn't work out, and your staff spends time and energy on a lot of things that, that ultimately don't work out. So that's what's in front of you today is a request for a refund of the $35,000 application fee. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Okay, see, I see, um, Commissioner Holmes?
Patrick, I just have one question. If we didn't have the green light to move forward, why would we, um, deposit the check?
Well, because it was an application. Uh, we, we required, your staff and the ordinance basically required, basically said, we, there's nothing more we can or will do until you make a formal application. And that the ordinance called for an application fee to be paid with that formal application. The, there was the point where, and I don't want to speak for your management team, but I think there was the point where the management team was like, look, we've done all we can do without the board, without the board telling us to do it or not do it. So we, we, we sort of said, look, Lake Dow, there needs to be an application filed, something that we can take to the board to get instructions from the board. And you probably all remember. And you probably all remember, when this matter did come in front of the board, there were a lot of questions that we couldn't answer at the time, we didn't answer, and frankly, they remain unanswered, which is probably why Lake Dow has undertaken to do this on their own. Things like, who would own the dam? Who would have access to the lake? You know, exactly how would the mechanics of going in and repairing the dam work? And, you know, for how long would the county be in charge of maintenance? So, those questions, we could never, we never resolved, and we never brought the final resolution to the board. And I think what happened was Lake Dow decided, I think Lake Dow realized that there were some issues with getting those things resolved, so they've undertaken on their own to do this project. And they'll, and my understanding is, is they will finance this project through their homeowners' association.
So, we never created a special tax district?
I don't believe we created any tax district.
Or any engineering plan?
We were working, before, the reason we didn't create the district is we were working to identify the limits of the district. And we had a lot of different options. We could have made the district simply overlay the homeowners' association. We could have also made the district overlay the drainage basin that drain into the lake, or we could have made the tax district be the drainage basin that drained into the lake and some period downstream. So, there was a lot of debate, a lot of internal debate about exactly what the boundaries of that district should be.
What about the design and engineering plan?
It was, we never completed one. So, they submitted, Lake Dow submitted a feasibility study that included a somewhat aged, some aged design and engineering studies. They would not have been sufficient to really move forward and get a reliable cost estimate. And that was what the June of 2019, I believe it was, resolution that was brought to the board was for us to say, "We can't, we can't really proceed unless we know what this project really will cost," so that we can tell the board, "Here's what we're, here's what we're getting into, and here's what we'll be required to do if we go and issue the GO bonds." So, we never retained the engineer. We never paid engineers' monies. We did have, there was an engineering firm that assisted in creating the ordinance, Schnabel? Schnabel? And I believe they helped, but I don't think we ever had to pay any fees directly related to this.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Patrick, I hear what you're stating. Can the county manager confirm that we had no expenses, no fees paid to anyone in reference to this transaction?
Commissioner Thomas, I've asked our financial team to review, and they have not found any expenses that have been paid out by the county as it pertains to this, to Lake Dow community.
And we actually did receive a check and was deposited?
Yes, ma'am. We did receive a check for $35,000, and we did deposit it.
Okay. Patrick, I understand you refer back to there's some type of legal document that allows homeowners' association to make this type of application to us. Can you bring that back to us at a later time so we can review that process and see if it needs to be updated, deleted, or just totally thrown out? Because I don't understand how in the world we allow a private organization to pay private money to a public government so they can make their own tax, and we bonded it. It's just really seemed to be a complicated process. So, will you please bring that process to us at another time?
I certainly will, and I'll tell you this, it is a complicated process.
Thank you.
And it is complicated because it is a, it's a complex situation. Property owners find themselves living in a neighborhood with a big lake and a dam, and as you might guess, I don't know anything about dams. And your typical homeowners' association isn't equipped to deal with a dam. And if you have a subdivision that's gotten a lot of age on it, like Lake Dow has, over years, dams have issues, so...
And people move.
People come in, and people come out, management, and sometimes homeowners' associations die out.
Absolutely.
So, we, when we presented the ordinance initially, and we'll repeat this again, and I'm sure we'll have your stormwater staff explain this, too, there is a public health, safety, and welfare aspect of this, which is if these dams fail, bad things happen, both to your, the drainage basin, to your property values, and quite frankly, people's lives and property are at risk. So, there is, there is a valid reason for government intervention. And the way we addressed, the way we created that ordinance was to try to balance the public interest against the taxpayer interest. If I live on the other end of the county, I don't feel good about paying taxes to fix a dam in a neighborhood. If I live in that neighborhood, I don't feel good about bearing all the cost to repair that dam when other people benefit from the drainage basin that's created by that dam. So, there are some quirks about it, but we'll certainly bring that back, and we can walk through it with the board. I do not believe anyone else, there's been some conversations, I think, maybe from another subdivision or two. I don't think anyone else has come to the county with a formal request, and frankly, I think perhaps the reason for that is we do expect an application fee, that's a pretty substantial application fee. So, that, you know, it may be that you want to push that thing off to the side. It may be you want to open it up to more people. And actually, the last time it came before the board, I think the board's, ultimately, the board's desire was to try to expand the application of that to a wider audience, as opposed to a narrower audience. But we'll bring it back to the board once you...
Thank you, because it does predate me sitting here. I would love to get more information about it and what we need to do to try to either tighten up the loopholes, or make this process smoother, or decide this is something we don't need to participate in.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Alright, so we're now open the floor for a motion.
Move to approve.
There is a motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor? Okay, that was, okay, that was unanimous with those that are here. Alright, thank you. Alright, well, we'll now move into the public comment section, and this is where we allow citizens to come and voice their county-related concerns and opinions. Again, you have to sign up prior to the board meeting, and will be granted five minutes. We ask that individuals, please, address their comments to the board, not individuals. And so, again, at this time, we'll recognize all of those who are expected for comment. So, I look to our county clerk to identify who they are.
There are four speakers that have signed up. Michael Ward, Carmen Watkins, Cora James, and Aubrey Tooks.
Michael Ward is first. I may have to call them back, but we'll ask Mr. Work, if you would please, would you please come forward now, please? And again, each one will be given five minutes, so thank you, sir. Good morning.
How you doing? My name is Michael Ward. I'm here to talk about, I'm here to talk about some development that's going on in the Country Pine Estate subdivision. I grew up in that subdivision. I'm a product of that subdivision, and the majority of people that live there now are retirees who helped raise me, and I refuse to let this go wrong. When I first heard about the development in that area, it was about two years ago, I want to say that. A certain individual came through there, and as a kid, I used to play all through the woods, so I know those woods. So, he came through there, bulldozed the woods down, and then put some horses in a stable back there. The initial complaint started off about the smell of the horses. So, from what I was told, they went to court sometime last year. Last couple of months, I've been going back and forth looking at this area, and I've been contacting code enforcement, not only code enforcement, but individuals at GDOT and EPD. As of right now, I'm a construction director for the City of Atlanta, working through a consultant named Atkins. So, I went on the property, I found certain discrepancies, and I called code enforcement. Henry County Code Enforcement went down there. They said they didn't find anything. I called the code enforcement from GDOT, which I used to be, I used to work there also. I called them. They found several discrepancies, but told me it was a county issue, and that he was gonna step out of it. Fine. Okay, so I contacted the code enforcement again the second time. Second individual went down there, found several discrepancies, called me back and said he would be fined. Next thing you know, the next day, I get a call back saying he's not gonna find him. Why? He could not tell me. But, at this moment, I went down there and looked at the site. It's on a 7.36 acre lot between two subdivisions. The same subdivision, but it's just a stretch of trees in the middle. This property was balled up. Horse was put in the middle. Okay? That should not have never happened, okay? No erosion control measurements are taking place at this time. Even I sent Henry County Code Enforcement down there, and they called me back saying there was no discrepancies. Right now, is, the plan's called for double silk fence. There's no silk fence on that property whatsoever. Orange barrier fence, which is supposed to, excuse me, I'm kind of nervous, was supposed to protect certain trees, are not installed, okay? He has a construction exit and entrance. Under that construction and entrance, supposed to be a corrosion control mat, which is not in place. I went out there and moved the gravel. No erosion control mat is installed whatsoever. He has trucks running down the road all day, every day. A neighborhood street is an inch and a half to two inches of asphalt. The trucks came down through the neighborhood and basically tore up the road. Also, I also called Henry County about this incident also, about the tore-up road, the curb and gutter, and also some property damages to certain individuals because the trees were not cut down. They were bulldozed down. That should not have happened, okay? Is there a way I can show these pictures? Hope this don't include my five minutes. This is the road right here at Country Pine and Manor Way. That's what happened when he sent his trucks down the road. He threw a little coal patch in the area, which coal patch is not meant to repair this area. Coal patch is used for potholes, which when he replaces this area with coal patch, it will cause much more damage, okay? This is an image of his construction exit and entrance, which you can see he has no mat under it. Here's another image, okay? This is silk coming out of his construction area onto public roads. That silk goes all the way up Country Pine Road to Boulder Crest, which is a good little ways, a nice little ways. Here's another image. This is a concrete curb and gutter that was damaged by the trucks coming down the road. Needless to say, the dirt that he's bringing in is not quality dirt. It's filled with just boulders and dirt. So, it's some cheap dirt that he's bringing into that area, okay? No mat under his construction exit and entrance. I would also like to see a washout area to stop silk and dirt from coming into the public roads. This picture was taken the other day when it rained. As you can see, no silk fence was up. Water was ponding in that area. That should never happen, okay? This picture right here is a picture, I don't know if you can see, there's a crack from him bulldozing down trees in the individual's home.
Okay, and thank you, sir. I think that concludes your time. I did go a little bit past the five minutes, so, but thank you, sir. I thank you for your comments. Okay, we're gonna allow our public comment period to...
Talking about the same thing, so I think it would probably be worth it to let the county manager address the issue.
Well, we need to allow our public to speak. They came in, they signed up, so they do need to come and speak. So, we're gonna go to the next, we're gonna go to the next public comment, and then we'll, and then at your request, we'll allow the county manager to speak. We're gonna, we're gonna respect our citizens that made the effort to be here. And, excuse me, and sign, and sign up. If they want to forfeit their time, that's gonna be up to them.
I think they want to know how we plan to handle the situation.
Please be respectful, Commissioner Holmes. Who is the next person that signed up for public comment?
Carmen Watkins.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for your opportunity to be here. I'm a resident. I live at 1221 Country Pines Drive. And the property in question is at 1299 Manor Way. I've been living in the same house since October 1st of 1980. And the problem is, can I get you to show the first picture, please? The picture that I'm gonna present to you first is dated April of 2019, and this picture represents the first instance that we had with the person that is doing the construction behind my home. So, as you can see, we called code enforcement out because he was leaving the dirt and mud, and there was nothing stopping him from coming through, and it was just getting everywhere. So, we went to court. He was fined. He was fined for, in violation, and so, the next thing that happened, he started bringing in trucks, dump trucks. And where I live, I live on the cul-de-sac, so when you come in, my house is where the telephone pole is, but it's backed that way. I'm gonna show you pictures of that. So, the reason we're here today is we've called, and the same thing that he was fined for when we went to court last year, he's continued to do. He's continued to damage the road and break the road up. So, this picture right here is a picture of, so my house is there in the back, and these two gentlemen are from the code enforcement. That is the corner of Country Pine and Manor Way. And so, I wanted to show you a before picture, as I did the first picture, where you can see that the road does not have any breakage or damage, and it's not bulldozed up. And what happened was the weight of the dump trucks coming through had damaged the road. So, these two pictures I want to show you in tandem. When I come out of my house on the driveway to get to the cul-de-sac, that's the only way I can get out of the subdivision. However, I'm precluded from doing such because the damage of the road. And so, me driving over, over the road causes me a possibility of damaging my vehicle because there's no clear exit. Because, oh, I'm sorry. As you can see in this picture, as you come around my house, as I come out of my house, on either side, that's what I have to drive across, and the pictures really don't show. This is a larger picture showing how broken up the road is. And as I showed you the initial picture, that's not how the road was. We called code enforcement. We asked them, "Why are you not mitigating the circumstances? Why is this person allowed, why is his rights supersede my rights as a homeowner and a taxpayer? Why is he being allowed to do this?" During the first week of October is when they start bringing all the big dump trucks in, and they were lined up on the side of my house, just, that's the telephone pole. They were lined up on the side of my house, and even when code enforcement was there watching them, they didn't stop them. And so, my question is, why is this person allowed to tear the road up, decrease the value of our property, and he's not being fined? And also, the permits that he has, he has a permit from September 20th for the land disturbance. However, he was fined, and we have the documents showing, when we went to court last year, he did not have the ground, land disturbance permit, but for 15 months, he was allowed to continue to come through and disturb the land. So, this is a picture. This is my driveway. That part right there that you're seeing right there have pictures of a truck that was sitting there the first week of October. The week of October 5th is when they start all the big dump trucks. And so, for a larger picture to show you the damage that this person has done, that's the picture right here. And so, our concern is, we pay taxes there, but this person's tearing the road up, and no one's stopping him. Code enforcement keeps on telling us that he has the permit, but I don't believe that there's any permit in the state of Georgia. The state statute, according to the official code of Georgia, there's not a permit that you can get that allows you to tear up the road. So, thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say at this time.
Okay, thank you. And our next person?
Cora James.
My name is Cora James, and I live at 1225 Manor Way. I moved up 51083. This is not our first rodeo here on this concern. We came back in 2005. There's a lot of us that's elderly in there, and I don't mind saying, I'm 63, and I'm proud to be a senior. However, and I will skip some of the parts. I don't have pictures because I piggyback on what my neighbor says, okay? The streets are constantly, and I do, I believe in the process. At least, I did believe in the process until recently, okay? You go through the change of command. I did all of that. I contacted everybody, the city officials that I needed to contact. And only, when I finished contacting them, I felt so... And only when I finished contacting them, I felt so helpless and so violated that I did not have a right. And I've been here in this county paying taxes since I was twenty-six years old. And you're gonna tell me that you're gonna let somebody come in here and, and take my rights from me, and I don't have no right? I listened to that noise all day long, all day and all night. I, I, I mean, and it's like, basically, my house shakes. And that's what I was telling the person, both of the person. And I also told the people, every time I called them, they said, well, hey, he's got a permit. What about my permit? Don't know about, it don't give them the right to shake my house. I have not slept since this has been going on. Every time a noise come, I jumped up because honestly, I don't know. The only thing that's underneath the ground is dead people or something dead. I ain't dead yet. But I do feel like the way my house shake, I might wake up in hell one day. So, I jumped up all the time trying to see what's going on. And I don't think that's right. Nobody is addressing our issues, and they say that this person is within his rights. So, what about my rights? You know, my house honestly come, and I've invited them. I've invited people, come sit if you like. You know, I don't have no covert, you know? And if I do, I, I mean, you know, if, there are precautions that I do know how to take for it. And I invite people to come in, I mean, and therefore, them, the, the officials, like I said, I've gone through the process to say that this person within his right, that man goes home after he finished tearing up our streets, making all that noise. He don't live out there. We have to continue to live out there. I hate to be so emotional, but you gave me five minutes, I'm trying to cram everything in. And honestly, this is the way I feel, and this is wrong. I mean, this is wrong, this is really wrong. I'm at twelve twenty-five for a reason. Twelve twenty-five have a symbol. I have given up a lot of my rights just to appease certain people, you know? My house is being damaged. That was my ceiling that was cracked, stuff has fallen off. But you know what I did? I sucked it up, and I made a right with it. But right now, things that's going on there, it's not right. I cannot sleep, I, I cannot sleep, no lie. And I have, I have underlying medical conditions. And I don't, I, I don't know what else to do. I have honestly, when I do wake up and I'm not asleep, I get on, I've contacted everybody, and I don't plan on stopping because this is not right. I've contacted everybody I could think of, everybody but your president, former, whoever, Donald Trump. And I believe he'll answer me and give me all more answers than I'm getting now because as a taxpayer, I'm not done right. Not only me, but my neighbors as well. And you say it's okay for him to tap the street? If I go out there and tap the street, what's gonna happen to me? And as taxpayer, who gonna fix these streets? We've called certain people, and then they say, hey, we're just gonna take this little section out and repair this section. That's not right, it shouldn't have been torn up anyway. That's all I gotta say. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Aubrey Tucks.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
Madam Chair. Um, my concern is, uh, I live at, uh, twelve twenty, Country Pine Drive. Uh, I've been there for thirty-two years. And my major concern is, um, what's going on back there? You know, we not getting any answers, and we need to know what is happening. You know, we live in these houses, and, uh, what we are looking for is our value to go up, not down. Uh, the streets, like she said, are all torn up. And we just want some kinda answers of what's going on back there. We keep getting different data, you know, horse park, maybe a house. We don't know what's going on. And my neighbors, like you said, we're elderly, we're looking for peace, we're looking for comfort. And if we can get that and get some understanding here from the board today, that's what we want. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude our public comment? Okay, so that does conclude our public comment section of the agenda. And I did hear Commissioner Holmes request our county manager to, um, to respond to the comments, so we'll allow that time now.
And I can see how bothersome it is to, um, the people in this particular community. So, what I would like the county manager to do is, um, address it and, um, and speak to how we plan on, um, rectifying it.
So, and, and, and I've jotted down a couple of, um, additional information that's been brought to my attention. Um, on last week, the county manager's office was made aware of a concern regarding a parcel of land located, um, within this subdivision. And when the request initially came to the county manager's office, it was in, in regards to whether permits had been issued and what exactly was going on, um, on the property. Um, I did speak with our building department and was able to confirm that the property was zoned for residential agricultural, um, which would allow for what the permit, the purpose of the permit was issued for. I will show, because I did hear to, this morning, that there were concerns about people not knowing what's going on. So, bear with me, I'm gonna pull up the actual permits, put it on the overhead, and then I'll kinda keep going through. So, this is one of two permits that have been issued by the building department. Um, this permit was issued on October fifth. And if you'll notice in the, um, general description, um, what the applicant applied for was for a pole barn. And so, this is permit number one, which was issued. If you'll notice, um, on the actual building permit, there are specific guidelines and regulations that the property owner has to adhere to. Now, it's my understanding that this is about a seven point three, seven point five acre track of land. And so, the applicant will be required to meet minimum setback requirements and then any supplemental standards that may go along with, um, this development, which I'll show you that as well. So, again, this is permit number one. And then this is permit number two, which is for a horse stall. Keep in mind, this property is zoned RA, and under the RA zoning designation, it would allow these types of uses, including any type of agricultural type use. Now, what's interesting about this parcel is that while he's accessing it through this subdivision, this parcel is not included in the final plat for the subdivision. And so, it's a seven acre track of land that's accessed through the subdivision, but is not a part of the subdivision. And so, I can understand why the property owners are concerned because he's having to go through their subdivision, but it is a separate track that is not a part of the actual subdivision. Yes, ma'am.
He has seven point three acres of land. The base looks sitting behind a subdivision?
It's in between two subdivisions. It's a seven acre track of land that is cushioned between two subdivisions.
Two subdivisions.
Yes, ma'am, I'll see if I can pull it up.
And its only access point is to go through the two subdivisions?
It's my understanding that he's accessing it through, and is it countryside? Country Pine, I'm sorry. He's accessing it through Country Pine. Which is, and that's, that's normal, Commissioner. Um, you have properties where individuals may come in and just acquire a certain amount of acreage, and then they may leave a strip, um, that they're, they have no use for. And so, this person acquired this seven acres. And I'm gonna pull it up on a map so I can show you specifically what it looks like. Now, um, we have gone back and pulled every record as it pertains to this property. And I, it's my understanding that maybe two or three, thank you, Patrick. So, if you'll notice, Commissioner, the property in question is that dirt piece. And then he's actually, the subdivisions, there's a subdivision to the north and to the south. And I don't know the name of the other subdivision. Manor Way, thank you. So, there's two subdivisions that are cushioned between that seven acre track of land. Now, one of the concerns that I've heard this morning is specifically the roads. And, um, our DOT department was made aware of that concern, and that's why I have Alex here because they've actually been out on site. And he has spoken with me about some of the things that they can do to help remedy what's going on. So, I'm gonna let Alex speak to that, and then I wanna pull up some of the design regulations that will be required of the property owner who's obviously under a permit for stables and/or facilities for livestock. Um, because he's building that horse, or at least the pole barn and the horse stalls, it's my understanding that he will be bringing horses onto the property for that purpose. Again, our code would allow what he's doing. Um, now, in terms of the roads, that's where Alex will speak to that.
This past Monday, the second, at ten o'clock, uh, at DOT, we had a meeting. Uh, code enforcement was present, county solicitors' office was present, the building department, stormwater, and DOT. And we did discuss the associated issues and problems with this development. And, uh, the issues with, uh, erosion control, what we saw, the latest pictures, that, speaking to code enforcement, buildings department, the developer is in compliance with the erosion control, including, uh, double draw of steel fences and gravel construction entrances. However, there are damages to the roadways. And, um, as a result, there were two possible solutions that we discussed was first, to attain a date of completion through a construction schedule to see when this builder is going to be finished with the development. Secondly, upon completion of this development, DOT will fix all associated damages that this builder has done, uh, to the roads. And then the bill will be forwarded to the county solicitors' office for them to legal follow up, if needed so be. There are no state waters, uh, on site. And environmentally, beside being a nuisance, we did not see any other impact that needs to be addressed. So, as a result, uh, the roadways, yes, they are damaged. They will be fixed, and a bill will be prepared.
I have a question. Was this developer required to, um, purchase an upfront bond to make these repairs to the area?
Not that I know of, it, it was not.
So, and it's a learning experience for me. I thought that if that a development is taking place, that they're required to purchase bonds to make sure that those roads are repaired in case there is a damage. And that's what I've been working with George with, with development in my areas. So, why were no upfront bonds required of this developer?
So, and I, I can't speak to why the decision was made not to. I would only make an assumption that based on the permit that was pulled, it did not warrant, um, a bond being required. So, typically, when you have your larger scale developments, like a subdivision development, where you know that they're gonna be going back and forth and the impact that they'll have on the roads, um, a bond would have been required. But because the permit only said pole barn and horse stalls, I'm assuming, again, um, that the determination was made that, hey, there's, there shouldn't be a lot of heavy equipment that's gonna be coming and going. Um, there has not been a permit pool for a home. And so, we would not have expected heavy trucks to be coming in to build a home. Um, again, it's just based on the information that's on this permit. Um, but again, I am making some assumptions. So, I will definitely, that's something I'll have to follow up with, with Mr. Patterson on and the building department to determine, um, what was their criteria for, for determining that that bond would not be required.
So, it sounds like to me that our application that we're using is in default. Because that application should have required more information to determine what is actually going to be used for a development, not just this development, but any development. So, it sounds like to me, again, I'm looking at beyond this situation, which I'm hoping you and the commissioner have already outlined how you're going to solve it. And, you know, I believe that. But I'm saying to us, apparently, the application itself is defaulted in that it does not require enough information so that you all can determine what other type of bonding requirements are needed for any development. And that concerns me. That he's able to have these big trucks, dump trucks, whatever he needs to do what he is allowed to do in a RA without you knowing that there's other requirements needed to protect our roads, our investment in a community. Cause that could have happened to me and I not know it. So, I'm talking about the application, not, not about how you're solving it.
It's not, he's not building a development to sell to somebody. He's building a development on his own property. So, I don't think there would be a need for him to bond anything because he's building a barn. But he's bringing in dirt to, or to his property. So, I think, I think that's the, um, that's the, um, difference here. But when I was out there a couple of weeks ago, I was told that he would be done with what he was doing in a couple of weeks. And after, um, he completed that, then the DOT department would then come in and fix the roads. But it doesn't sound like he's complete, um, with this project. Am I correct or, or not?
Correct, sir. That's why we are contacting the individual to get an approximate date of completion. And we will stay on it as soon as it's done. Whatever damages is caused as an association of this development will be fixed by DOT.
Sounds good, thank you, sir.
So, like I said, I'm, I'm confident that you guys have worked out what you need to do to fix that particular situation. And I really am speaking beyond that situation. And so, I am saying for me, if I was in this situation, I'm asking you to look at the application process. Cause that application should have required additional information to let you know that dump trucks will be coming in there, field dirt will be moved, whatever he needs to make that happen, the application doesn't address that, uh, county manager. And I'm saying to you, we need to upgrade this application so that if indeed you need big trucks, dump trucks, whatever else he needs for a particular development, whether it's a subdivision, a one house, a barn, something needs to be in that application that requires him to outline what he's going to need to fulfill his requests. So that in addition, before this takes place, before there's a damage is done, we already have some mechanism in place to ensure that this is going to be, um, repaired by the applicant and not by the county. That's what I'm asking for. I'm going to, again, assume that the county commissioner is working with his, uh, community to take care of that. So, I'm not speaking directly to that. I am speaking to the process here, and I'm very concerned about that. And I'm asking you, Alex, to go back and look at that application, get an upgrade to it. I'd like to see that upgrade to it so nobody be caught in this situation again, be it in District Four, District One, Two, or Three, okay? So, now, what's happening is that damage has been done. The commissioner is working to repair it and work with the community. Had we done this ahead of time, we shouldn't be in this situation, is what I'm saying. And I do wanna see a correction update to that application process, I wanna review it, okay?
And so, just for clarification, the application goes through the building department. So, Alex would not be who's over that. And it sounds like what you're looking for is just a little more detail in the application in terms of will you be bringing in, um, heavy equipment as part of your development? And I think that's something we can certainly add to the application process.
I want you to review the actual application to make sure, no matter if they putting a doorstep somewhere, that they need to be specific as to what type of equipment is going to be used to make it happen so that we won't look up again and just say they're within their rights to do it. We need to know how they're going to do it, what equipment is going to be required, what proposed damages will be done to the surrounding areas, uh, what access points will be used to, to get to your property if necessary. So, we can make sure if there is damage, the county is protected and the builder, be it a builder of a one room or ten houses, will be held accountable for the damage done to the area.
And I think Commissioner Thomas makes a great point because we, uh, we issue land disturbance permits for, uh, for timber removal. And, um, I have another area off of East Atlanta Road where, um, they've come in, they removed timber, but they left a mess. And I know code enforcement has been contacted a number of times, and nothing, and nothing has been rectified. So, we do, we do really need to look at, um, how we're issuing permits.
We do. And see, like, the, uh, the applicants, not the applicants, but our citizens are saying they feel helpless because they're caught in between. If a process is not polished to protect our citizens, and they're caught in between of the process, they're having to live through it while he has the right to do it. He can easily say, I have a permit, I have the right to do it, and I'm doing it. They're saying, well, I'm a taxpayer too. They're saying, well, I'm a taxpayer too. And I don't see how your rights super precedes my rights to cause this uncomfortness and damage to an area that I'm living in. Well, he can say, I have a permit, I have a right to do it, it's zoned properly, and he's doing it. So where are their rights? And we are saying, well, when he finish doing what he's doing and you're being, you're uncomfortable through the process, let him finish making you uncomfortable, damage my car, damage what I'm having to do, then we'll make right with you. That's not right. That, that's simply not right. And we need to fix that. And we need to fix it upfront and not on the end. So you're asking them to live through it, drive through it, bear it, the dust, the mud, the silk, the holes, just live through it. Then eventually we'll get to you and repair it. And somebody has to pay for that repair. Who's gonna pay for it? And that's just not right. And I don't wanna be caught there. And I'm saying, let's fix this so I won't be caught in a situation like that while you all are taking care of this for them. Something is just not right about it. Cause I know I don't wanna live through it. And I don't wanna have to sit there and drive my car through those potholes that she showed me. And for someone to say, my house is shaking. And my next question is, if, if indeed he has the right to put this, I'm assuming horse farm back there and stables, after why, you got another environmental thing to be concerned about? The smell, the turn, the upkeep? What's being addressed about that? Cause that's coming next. You know, I'm a country girl. I, I grew up in the country. The pigs, the horses, the cows, I know all about them. So that's coming next. So what's going to be there to address this whole issue?
So Commissioner Thomas, a couple of things. As I stated earlier, the County Manager's Office was made aware of it last week. And it looks like this has been going on since April of last year. And so now that I've been made aware of it, we've gotten the resources in place that's going to try to address the issue. I agree, we probably should've required some type of bond for, for the project. But looking at the application, there was no triggers that gave us that information. Now, one of the things that I want the board to be aware of is that our Unified Land Development Code, which is our zoning ordinance, regulates this type of development. And so you have to have minimum requirements, like to, to have livestock, to have horses, to have stables, you have to have a minimum land area of three acres. This property is on seven acres. And it does appear that it's very close to the properties. It doesn't look like it's seven acres, but it is seven acres. But there's also a provision that odor control is required and pest control is required. And so if there are odor or pest control issues that are lurking, then that is something that code enforcement can address, because that is a requirement of our code. They have to have minimum setbacks of 50 feet. They have to be 100 feet from all residential zone property, including their outdoor tracks and exercise yards. And then they also have to have a fence around the property. And so there are, these are things that our staff will have to go back out and make sure that they are adhering to those regulations. And if not, then we can definitely get code enforcement back involved to address it. So I, I think it's two issues. It's the development that's going on and then the road issue. Alex is going to work to figure out how we address the road issue. And then the other conditions that will be required will have to be adhered to. There, there are no exceptions to that. The only way that an exception can be granted to a minimum standard would be by approval from this board. And no approvals, no applications, nothing has come in for us to grant any exceptions. And honestly, I don't think the staff would even recommend to an applicant to, to submit anything to this board for review. So we are aware of it. We will definitely continue to make every effort to rectify what's going on and certainly look at the application process to figure out how we can put some teeth in it to make sure that this doesn't happen to, to future property owners.
There's setbacks, something I'm very concerned about too, on the application process. And there again, I'm looking beyond where they are now. But those setbacks may need to be increased when you talk about having an RA back up to a residential area. Because there again, you've got a lot of pest control to be concerned about. You've got a lot of environmental controls to be concerned about. Because what can happen with those setbacks to the residential area, it's going to be increased with a lot of different dangers as well.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, I think I saw you done, Commissioner Thomas.
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, Commissioner Barron.
Yes, I, I agree with my colleagues here, Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Thomas. You know, I, I think we can take care of this kind of thing during the process. The problem is it's zoned for what he's doing out there. But, but the other thing to that is that, that road is obviously not designed to carry the kind of loads that he's hauling in there. And we need to look at this along with all our roads and all our subdivisions in Henry County. And when, when they come in to get a permit, you know, we need to see what they're gonna haul and how much they're gonna be hauling. And, and it's, it's pretty obvious he's tore this road up. And he ought to be required, and that's one thing we can control. I mean, we could stop that today. We can say, we're not gonna allow no more big trucks in there, in that subdivision. So I, I think moving forward, we'll come up with a workable solution.
And I wanna remind the board that you all did authorize us to move forward with our pavement management program. So I think that's gonna help identify some of these roadways, Commissioner Barron, that are suffering or at least having issues. I think this is just one of those situations where you have a large tract of land that's right in the middle of the two subdivisions. And you don't have a lot of that in the county. A lot of your RA property is situated in one area. But this is just a very unique situation. And unfortunately, this one seven acre tract of land is not part of either subdivision. It's just sitting there undeveloped. And this owner obviously purchased it for residential agricultural purposes.
I would say to Commissioner Holmes, whatever you need us to do to help you with this, in forms of resolutions or upgrades to our current permits and what have you, let us know, cause this could've happened to any of us. So we'll be there to support you in whatever you need to do to help fix this.
Okay, Commissioner Barron, you still have the floor, any, any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts or comments, Commissioner Wilson?
One of the ladies mentioned that they went to court with this land on.
So my understanding, and I don't have anyone here from code enforcement, that about three years ago, the property owner pulled a permit, a land disturbance permit and actually went out and timbered the whole site. And they were called in, called into court for that issue. Now, if there has been any other court cases, I'm not familiar with those. So I, I can't say that they haven't, but that's the only one that the Building Department was able to make me aware of. And I think that was about three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Holmes.
I stand corrected. I've been told it's been one year ago, but it was not current. It was for the Timbering versus the Land Disturbance.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, thoughts or concerns? Okay, well, thank you from coming to address these public comment concerns. So thank you again. Okay, we will now move into the next agenda item, which is the approval of our minutes for September 1st, our regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and also the September 15th, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. If there are no revisions to those minutes, we'll now open the floor for a motion. We have a motion to approve. And a second, any questions, comments or revisions? All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Okay, at this time, we'll now welcome up our County Manager again for any County Manager comments.
I think I've spoken quite a bit this morning, or maybe afternoon now. The only comment I have is, at the last board meeting, I mentioned to the board that we had a website that was gonna go live regarding our SPOSS projects. And I'm pleased to announce that it has gone live. We've done a little tweaking. We have some capital project information that we've gotta update. But please, please refer to that website, share it with your constituents. It is going to be a very active site that will be updated weekly to make sure that you all and constituents are aware of where we are in not only our SPOSS process, but our capital process as well. One of the things we wanna make sure is that we're being very transparent, not only with you all, but with the residents as well, so that they'll know how we're spending dollars. And so if there are enhancements that we can make to it, if there's information that you'd like to see that's not there, please let me know. Tucson and our SPOSS team is really heading that project up. But if you have any concerns or questions, please let me know that. Other than that, I think that's all I have for today.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners?
County Manager, we closed on a building?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. So thank you, Commissioner, yes. So I am pleased to announce that we officially own, and I don't wanna refer to it as the Fred's Building anymore, it is our Elections Building. We did close on that. I do wanna thank our County Attorney and David Smith for making sure that the funds were wired and we are good to go. You will notice some activity. We're gonna go ahead and secure the location. We're gonna put a fence around it because it's county property right now. We wanna make sure that we protect the integrity of that building. But Hutch and his team know that that is a priority for us to get moving on that. I've told him I wanna cut the ribbon in January, so he knows that it'll be done by the end of December, hopefully. But no, he's gonna work expeditiously to make sure that we get moving on that. But again, thank you, Commissioner Thomas and the entire board for allowing us to move forward on purchasing this building. I think Elections is going to appreciate it greatly. And I, I think that they are definitely very happy that we're moving in that direction. I do wanna also take this time to thank the board, because if you all realize it or not, this morning, we approved quite a few resolutions. And that is based on the capital improvement program that you all approved. And you all are really seeing fruits of your efforts moving forward. And we have a lot of departments that are very pleased and thankful that you all approved those resolutions. We're gonna start our vehicle replacement, we're working on buildings. So we got a lot of things that are moving forward. So the next couple of months, you'll see a lot of construction going on here in the county. But it's all good construction. So thank you all again for that. And just be on the lookout for the next couple of meetings to start seeing resolutions coming forward as it pertains to the capital. I do wanna just mention one thing, because the board did agree to bring back all of the capital items. So you may see items that are under that 50,000 threshold. The only reason that I am not signing off on those items is because the board asked that any capital expenditures come back to this board for approval. And so I don't want you to think we're just delaying them, but we're bringing them back to you all so that you'll know what we're spending our monies on. And then what I hope to do is every month, provide you all with an update of where we are in terms of spending, because we do have a lot of projects that are moving, not only on the SPOSS side, but also on the capital side. One other thing that's important is for us to continue moving is our SPOSS projects. Because believe it or not, this is a five-year program, not a six-year program. And so we are moving quickly. And we wanna make sure that we're able to show to the citizens that we are moving those projects. But again, thank you. Yes, we did close on a building and we're really excited about that. And the first order of business is gonna be to repaint it, so it didn't have that green and blue Fred's look. But it'll be that Henry County blue that we'll have on that building somewhere. So thank you all for that. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions or comments the board may have.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, well, now moving to the Commissioner comments. And we'll begin with District One, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
District Three, any comments? District Four.
Yes, I do have some comments. One, I wanna thank our administrative team for what they did for the Board of Elections, for their security. The team put together a fantastic group to make sure that the county was safe. I understand they were up at 5:00 in the morning and Don asked that. He was up, I think about 4:00 in the morning, reporting over to what they call their, what you call that thing, Brad?
Our Emergency Operations Center.
Yes, the Emergency Operations Center. They were watching chess to make sure things were calm around the county. They had everybody deployed to different sites. They had the boys sub-tracking where all the cops and everything were. I was just really impressed, cause I went over to look at it. And I was so impressed, they pulled so many organizations together as a one Henry team to make sure that Elections went off without any type of problems. And Henry County was ready, you guys. And I'm just proud of them. And I wanna say thank you to all of you for the work that you put forth to make sure yesterday was great. I was so impressed, I tried to buy breakfast for them, they said, we already got our breakfast. I said, well, let me buy lunch for you, D. So great, we already have lunch. So there was nothing I could do to even say on sight, thank you, but let them know that we're so proud of the work that they've done. Thank you so much. I wanna say thank you to David for the effort you're putting forth in finances here. A lot of times I call him and I ask him a lot of questions, you guys. I really do. I have to admit, I put them under pressure to say, where is this? Why can't you do that? Find this, locate that. And he does that in addition to making sure Henry County looks good financially. Congratulations on the awards that we consistently receive because of the effort of your department. And I wanna say thank you again for that hard work. And I am gonna put Patrick under a little bit of a pressure to say, I'm tired of waiting on SDS. I am tired of waiting on SDS. I need you to bring that to some form of conclusion. Regardless of what it takes, do we have to go to court? Do we have to stand up? What do we have to do? But I'm tired of waiting on it. We need to deliver and get that before us and pass something. For almost two years, it doesn't make any sense. So please give that before us. So thank you and you're about to have a great day.
Okay, all right, District Five, any comments?
Comments.
Okay, well, thank you. What, what my comments are too, it was a very smooth Election Day and the teamwork that occurred, you know, with all of the agencies and the Emergency Operations Center and between county and cities is to be commended. So congratulations on that. The other thing is, as we all know, we, we will have a new Chair of the Board of Commissioners and beginning in 2021. And it has indeed been my honor to, to serve. And I will, again, in any capacity, continue to pray for this beautiful county that we have and continue to serve in whatever capacity that God leads me as well. But again, wanna wish our new Chair of the Board of Commissioners the very best. So again, just wanna say thank you to you, Board members as well. And again, I know my term ends December 31st. But I do wanna commend the staff. I've been so impressed about your commitment and diligence to, to serve our citizens, to also work with, you know, this Board of Commissioners in so many ways. But you all are very hardworking people. And that's why it's not a surprise that you get the excellent awards that you get. And again, just ask that you continue to stay focused on serving, because that's the key to it all. And I just appreciate being on the team. So I have no other further comments. And I see, sir, we cannot interrupt the meeting. We have to, I have people to sign up for public comments ahead of the meeting. And it wouldn't be unfair if we allowed you to come without going through that process. But you're welcome to speak to us after the meeting, if that's okay. But at this time now, we'll move into the next item, which is regarding our upcoming meetings and events. On November 17th at 6:30 PM, we will have a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then on December the 1st at 9:00 AM is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And so if there's nothing more for the good of the group, I'll now open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
See a second from Commissioner Thomas, any further discussions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. And thank you, I think that was unanimous. And thank you all for being here today and thank you for tuning in. Thank you.